Hi, thank you. Welcome all to the city council, regular city council meeting of the city of San Juan Bautista. It is Tuesday, August fifteenth at five oh three P M. Pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Freels. Meeting hasn't started and I'm already losing my voice. May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Freels.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Morris Lopez. Councilmember Sabatia.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Thank you very much. We are going into closed session. The items for discussion are public employee performance evaluation and conference with legal counsel. Do we have any public comment before we go into closed session?
No speaker cards received, but I do have one hand raised, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Terry Thompson.
Yes, my name is Terry Thompson and I'm the project manager for Caltrans. One fifty-six twenty-five roundabout. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place for me to speak, but I do have a brief update on some construction changes that will be happening in the next few days. So on Wednesday, August sixteenth and Thursday, August seventeenth.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. We're going into closed session now, so if you can come back at the six o'clock meeting.
I can do that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Make a note for the record, please, that Councilmember Morris Lopez is present. Don't lose that it's.
Noted.
Thank you. And we are now going into closed session. Thank you. Hi, all. Welcome back to the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of San Juan Bautista. It is Tuesday, August fifteenth at six fifteen. Attorney Raffi, will you please take us out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I can do that. The council met in closed session this evening on the two matters listed on the agenda. One was a public employee performance evaluation of the city manager, and the second was conference with legal counsel on one matter of significant exposure to litigation. During the closed session this evening, the council received information and provided direction. There was no reportable action taken this evening in the closed session. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We have a presentation first and then general public comment. Can we do public comment first? Thank you. With consensus from the council, if we can do public comment first and then the presentation? Thank you. Public comment. Zoom, please?
You have three minutes. Thank you. Hi, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. I, my name's Terry Thompson and I'm the project manager for the Route twenty-five, one fifty-six roundabout. And I just wanted to give you an update on some traffic controls we have coming up in the next day or two. So on Wednesday, August the sixteenth and Thursday, August the seventeenth, Caltrans will implement overnight traffic controls at the intersection of Highway twenty-five and one fifty-six. Please expect delays between the hours of seven P M. and five A M. each night. The night work is necessary to transfer the intersection from a four-way signalized intersection to a new temporary traffic configuration. The temporary traffic configuration will operate similarly to a one-lane roundabout. Upon reopening on Thursday morning, August seventeenth, travelers will be required to slow down and yield to traffic already in the roundabout before entering. There will be no signalized traffic lights. All signals will flash yellow, and travelers, travelers will experience new advanced alerts as they approach the intersection. The alerts include a roundabout sign with flashing beacon, a yield signal, rumble strip to advise of the change to traffic at the intersection. Once inside, vehicles will follow the signage to exit to their desired destination. Speed limits within the project area will remain reduced to thirty-five miles per hour for the safety of travelers and construction crews. Caltrans is coordinating with the C H P. and other local agencies to ensure safety throughout the duration of this work. The second night of road work will permit the crews to place temporary barriers in the middle of the intersection to protect workers during the next phase of the turnable roundabout construction. You may have already seen, one week before this is going to take place, we have placed portable electronic message signs to alert travelers of the upcoming change to the intersection. So the temporary single-lane roundabout traffic configuration will remain in place through the end of the construction in early twenty-twenty-four, and at which time the multi-lane turbo roundabout will be open to the public. So Veronica from the COG is present, and she has some additional handouts about the overnight traffic control. Are there any questions?
None, thank you. Thank you very much for that information.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on Zoom?
See, you know, hands raised, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Chambers.
We have three speakers, speaker cards. Lori Tinkersley first.
Hi, welcome back. Speak closer and let's try it out. Is your green light on?
Just press it gently.
No, I think it has one. And do we have green light?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Jordan and Council. My name is Lori Tinkersley. I'm here on behalf of San Benito County Integrated Waste Management, I W M. for short. We at I W M. would like to thank you for your continued support and enthusiasm for our programs and for helping us spread the word. We are currently partnering with Resilient Central Coast on a wonderful new website for our county. Resilient San Benito County has the goal of having five hundred households participating and reducing two hundred and fifty tons of C O two emission by the end of this year. This website allows you to input your household, household energy use. Then you have many action items to pick from to reduce your household carbon emissions. You can easily filter from easy to difficult actions, even actions based off of emission impact or savings per year. Join your community to cut emissions, save money, and prepare for climate change. This website will be up this month. Check out updates when it's live on our Instagram and Facebook at S B C I W M. We are so excited to work with the community and each take action. And then as a reminder, residential fluorescents, paints, pool, yard, and household chemical cleaners, household batteries, used motor oil and filters, and more are accepted at our monthly household hazardous waste at John Smith Landville. This event occurs every third Saturday from nine A M. to twelve P M. Our next monthly event will be this Saturday, the nineteenth. For more information on acceptable materials, residents can visit our website at W W W dot C O S B dot U S backslash H H W. And we are offering a bulky item recycling and disposal event on September twenty-third and twenty-fourth from nine A M. to three P M. at the John Smith Landville, where residents can bring up to two bulky items per household at no cost. Residents can call I W M. at eight-three-one-six-three-six-four-one-one-zero, or visit our website at W W W dot C O S B dot U S backslash I W M. To view a list of all acceptable, acceptable materials. And we will also be at Hollister's Farmer's Market on September sixth, promoting and going over our coastal cleanup that will be happening on September twenty-third. We are hoping to support the community and doing a countywide cleanup around parks or heavily littered areas. We want to work together to make sure San Benito County trash doesn't end up in our coastal communities. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share more about our programs. I look forward to providing additional updates at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Armando Venegas.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Armando Venegas.
Can you please, sorry, speak into the microphone? I'm not sure it's actually, sorry, Lori.
Hello?
Working on Zoom. Is it? Okay.
Hello, my name is Armando Venegas. I wanted to thank you guys for letting me speak today. There's a lot going on with, with us at work. And it's really, I, I, I love where I work. I love the people that I work with. I, I, I love being part of San Juan and making San Juan, you know, a good place to live and a nice, peaceful, and positive place to live. And for the last seven months, we've had one of our coworkers, she's been off on administrative leave. And we had a meeting today with an attorney, and it really bothered, bothered me so much. I was shaking. I was crying. And this person has, is a cancer to our maintenance department. He is a very negative person. And it's really difficult to think that this person who physically threatened not only me, but my supervisor, well, there's a chance that he would be coming back to our group. And it really, it puts a strain on all of our crew. We were very worried, not worried, but anxiety and like, where's, it's, it's really hard on our crew. But I, I, I just wanted to let you guys know that it's been seven months. The guy's been getting paid for seven months with pay, sitting home even through the storms, and we got through it. We can get through this without him. If there's a chance that he comes back, you will lose part of your crew, just to let you know. And we love where we work. We love our city. But it's a strain on us. It's so hard to think that someone because with, with the workplace violence, it's not being taken serious. And he threatened my, my supervisor. He threatened me. And we've talked about this guy going postal on us. And there's a lot of companies and there's a lot of places that you see, you know, I don't know if he has, if he has a gun. But for me, it's like, I work for a living. I want to make my house payment. I want to make a good living. And thinking that this person could come back and shoot us and just wait until we're all there, it's freaking hard to think that this person might come back. And I appreciate you guys letting me talk today because this is really bothering us. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any other speaker cards?
Veronica Ledesma.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Veronica, thank you. Veronica Ledesma, Transportation Planning Manager for the Council of Governments. I'm here this afternoon to report two items. The first is that I recognize that Terry Thompson with Caltrans made the report on the roundabout. And I wanted to reaffirm and reassure you that the COG Board of Directors receives a monthly update on the Caltrans projects, and we will be closely monitoring any modifications or issues that we may have with that project. The second item that I wanted to report on is to inform you and also to welcome you to the town hall that the Council of Governments will be hosting on September twentieth and twenty-first. Please expect to receive a special invitation from me later this week with more information on the town hall. We will actually be welcoming the California Transportation Commission to San Benito County. So it's a great opportunity for us to showcase the transportation network that we have here in San Benito County and some of our high priority projects such as Highway twenty-five. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
A quick comment. The C T A is Caltrans's boss. So if you've ever been angry at Caltrans, and probably most of us in this building have been at one point or another, now's the time to express our C T A will be there and you can express it to the, to the board i- if you have certain issues with Caltrans.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
No, that was it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now we have a presentation, July fourth, twenty-twenty-three, Firework Compliance Debriefing Fire District Feasibility Study.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have Chief Padilla on the call today. And I'll summarize my understanding from the debrief reports that we got that were in your packet. This matter's been carried forward since our previous meeting. So a lot of those materials, the, the log reports from private security, from our code enforcement officer, from the sheriff, and from the fire department are all there together for you to read. The general feeling about the fireworks this year was that we repeated the similar enforcement policies that we did in the past. And this year with even stronger participation from the sheriff and with Chief Padilla being out on the street himself, I think we had a better result. But we open this up every year also to, to get some feedback from the community, things that we could do better. We're looking at our ordinance. It, it works fairly well. We could have tightened that up a little bit maybe. So we have some suggestions in the staff report. With that, Charlie Padilla would like to talk about the Fourth of July here in San Juan. I'm just, that, that concludes my presentation.
Hi, this is Charlie with Hollister Fire Department, your Fire Marshal. Can you guys, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for the invite. I mean, not much of a presentation, but I could give a report on what it was that happened, you know, between Hollister Police and members of the Hollister Fire Department, along with San Benito County Sheriff's deputies and code enforcement from all three agencies, San Juan Bautista, San Benito County, and Hollister, you know. We issued over fifty citations of illegal fireworks this year. Last year at this time, we issued probably about forty, we're looking at forty-four. So there's been an uptick on it, but we also didn't, we didn't patrol, code enforcement and fire did not patrol on July fourth because it's just not safe for us. P D. and sheriff's deputies did. With that, though, Hollister Fire Department responded twenty-three fires between June thirtieth and July fourth. Of those fires, four were confirmed fireworks. And actually, probably one of them was not firework related. We just couldn't confirm the other ones, but it's still, it was still suspicious, suspicions of fireworks and illegal fireworks that started those fires. We started our patrol this year on June twenty-eighth, when the sale of legal fireworks started in the county. And on July, let's see, on July thirtieth, we responded to four fires. Four on July one, four on July two, one on July three, and eight on July fourth. So all in all, Hollister Fire Department and everybody throughout the county confiscated over fifty pounds of illegal fireworks and paraphernalia. Some, and then this year, we even had some residents that actually surrendered fireworks. So I think that's, that's key that we do, hey, if you surrender the fireworks, you know, no questions asked, we'll take it whenever we can get it at any fire station, no questions asked. So do we have any other questions on this? And it was, good job with, it was a good collaborative effort on the citation that we did give that one night that I was patrolling in San Juan Bautista with the security and even our deputy onsite to help provide security that was needed that night.
Thank you.
And then, do you want me just real quick on the feasibility, real quick? Don, from what I understand?
Yeah, we got a little bit from Bob at our last meeting, our special meeting on the third.
Okay, and he had prior commitments that he had made a couple of months ago, so he's not in, in the state right now. But with that feasibility, he did meet with the consultants and he did give them all the key names, passwords, and the contacts. So the consultant should be making contacts with the city manager, the C I Os, the financial advisor, the financial analysts, along with all three jurisdictions. So they will be starting on that soon.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
You got it.
And I wondered, we have Uranus on the call from the Sheriff's Department. I don't know if he wants to talk at all about the fireworks. That's kind of a surprise.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a, like, about thirty fire calls, but we didn't cite anybody out. Usually they're heat info. But hopefully next year, we can have somebody just assigned to firework enforcement. But most of the calls were calls that we responded to, but we didn't cite anybody for those calls.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Freels. Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Freeman.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say that I thought that the amount of fireworks that was set off was considerably less than the previous years. Most of the fireworks that are offensive and make the big booms and scare my dog and scare other people's dogs are illegal fireworks to begin with. And so we can't really control that because they're purchased out of state or out of country or somewhere, you know. They're not for sale in San Benito County or anywhere else that I know of in the state of California. But they somehow arrive here each and every Fourth of July. So thank you for doing a great job to all those out there, officers, fire department, police department, sheriff's department, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Other than thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sabatia.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank both the fire and the sheriff's department for the one citation that was issued on the Fourth of July. Thanks for working together. I just have a couple of comments for our city manager. There were some discrepancies in the report. We allow the sales until ten P M. Next year, maybe we should go a little, little earlier than that, since the windmill closes at nine. And then it shows in code enforcement's report that one of, that the sign boards say legal fireworks permitted only on July fourth between six P M. and ten P M. But the ordinance says something different. Yeah, can't find where I wrote it down now.
Right, it was earlier in the day, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Even noon to ten, yeah.
Yeah, so if we can just coordinate those signs or the, the sign with the resolution for
I think the signs were correct and the report is wrong there.
Thank you. Okay.
That's my recollection because when I saw the signs up, I, I double-checked, so.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Public comment on this? Zoom?
We have two hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
James Pisano, you have three minutes.
Hi, welcome. There we go. Ida, you're up.
Ida's still on.
There we go.
Hi, sorry, our system's a little bit messed up. I was actually trying to raise my hand and comment on the other. So now, don't know if this is the appropriate time to do it, but it's
It is not. Sorry, we missed you for public comment originally. Do you have anything to, for fireworks?
No.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Not on Zoom, but we have one in Chambers.
Thank you. Chris. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. How are you guys?
Doing good, thanks.
I would urge you to consider reconsider the ordinance and consider making all fireworks illegal. We heard tonight that there fire department wrote something like fifty citations and the sheriff's department responded to thirty calls with no citations. I've been told that within the city of San Juan Bautista, only two citations were written. I don't know if that's correct. I didn't receive the full packet, so unfortunately, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to review the, the detailed report. I'm also curious what the cost of the monitoring equipment was. It doesn't appear that we've seen, if, if in fact two citations were written, it doesn't appear that we're getting much return on our investment since that number doesn't appear to be growing at all. Anecdotally, I understand that Salinas generated hundreds of thousands of dollars in citations for this. My wife and I chose to leave town and stayed a hotel in an area that did not have fireworks in order to safeguard our, our pets. So I can't comment directly on the evening of the Fourth. However, I will say that there was a dramatic increase in the amount of what I would class as illegal fireworks in the days, the weeks, literally, really the weeks leading up to the Fourth of July and the weeks after, up to and including this, this week. And I think it is, it, it's just a travesty. I have been paying, because of this issue, been paying particular attention to comments on Facebook and Nextdoor. And the number of lost pets is staggering. Pets found as far away as Salinas running af, running away due to fireworks. It, it's, it's pretty awful. The comments, there's been a huge volume of comments, negative comments on both Nextdoor and on Facebook. And I fear that the veterans that are affected by this issue are really not, not being heard. I don't hear much, and I think there's a level of embarrassment that they are not, not comfortable coming forward. And I would, I would encourage you to, to try to suss that out. But anyway, I, it, it's really frightening. But, uh, anyway, I, i- it's really frightening, uh, to watch the reaction of so many of the pets in town. I was completely on the other side of this issue until I personally got pets, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any further comments?
No.
This is Charlie with the Fire Department, real quick.
Go ahead, Chief.
I have one, one comment, you know, I, I, I've heard that quite a few times that, you know, it doesn't pay out, it doesn't pencil out. The cost for, um, you know, the cameras versus the amount of citations. We got, the only comment I really have on that is you really can't put a, a price on life safety in people's property, so. Did we lose any lives, did we have any injuries, or did we, um, lose any people's properties? No, so I think it's well worth it, and it's well job, well, well done, I mean, it's not a, we're not trying to get cost recovery, but. It did do a positive thing, so it is a good job on the city for doing that, so I really do appreciate that with active patrol, so good job San Juan Batista on that.
Thank you. Uh, back to the council, Councilmember Freels. Mayor Pro Tem Freeman.
I, I said what I was gonna say, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Moritano for, uh, speaking up. And maybe this is something that we can reconsider in the future. Um, I think what hit me is when he said, you know, we have to consider maybe a group of individuals that live in our community. You know, veterans that may not want to come forth and, you know, state their concerns out of, you know, shame or embarrassment. Um, so, you know, I hadn't thought about that until we brought that up, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Sabathia.
No comment.
Thank you, uh, thank you all for the presentation. Uh, consent agenda. There are nine items on the consent agenda, would any council member wish to pull anything? Councilmember Freels.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Freeman.
No, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
The consent item number E, um, it's a generic or general statement, approve a resolution authorizing.
Do you wish to pull this and discuss it?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Sabathia.
No, thank you.
Thank you, and I will be pulling. Uh, item C, five C and, uh, F. Thank you, any members from the public who wish to pull, uh, an item from the consent agenda?
A no speakers, no speaker card received, Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, any hands raised?
I guess we have one.
Thank you, welcome.
Ira Pisano, one Owani Street, San Juan Batista, um, item D.
Thank you. Uh, nobody in chambers, uh, okay, may I have a, uh, is there a motion to approve items A, B, G, H, and I?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, may I have, uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Morris Lopez. Item E, approval, resolution, authorizing closures of streets for certain special events in twenty twenty-three.
Yes, um, the reason why I wanted that pulled for discussion is the statement in itself is very gen- general in, in statement. Um, what types of certain, um. Special events are we speaking about, um, you know, how many more at the end of the year? Um, we recently had an event that, um, re, rethought its plan and did a different style. Um, so without there being a specific, um, event and knowing how many and what it entails. I think we need to really, um, look at that for an one-on-one request per a special event. Be considered instead of a blanket, blanket statement like that, that's just my preference, my comment, my opinion on that.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the council, Councilmember Freels?
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Freeman. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Frios.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sabatia.
Yes.
Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And I pulled five F approved the minutes of the special meeting of June thirteenth. They were approved on the July eighteenth meeting. Questions, comments, concerns? Anybody from Zoom or chambers? Thank you. May I have a motion to delete this from the consent agenda?
You don't need a motion. We just remove it. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. That was easy. Ida Pisano, uh, five D.
Am I unmuting?
You are. Go ahead. We can hear you.
Okay. So this kind of brings me back to the public comment part, the resolution of the COLA, because the concern we have is city salaries for the fiscal year. With regards to the city employees, and this also might address Armando's concern. Salaries, benefits, performance evaluations, just needed to find out who decides and how are these items determined? Because a quick review, and I could be very wrong, but current personnel roster totals approximately forty percent of the city's annual budget. And, you know, so how can our town of a population of only two thousand afford these salaries? And then now we're looking at COLA, and then down the line in your agenda, you've got the approval or appointment of a city attorney. Just really concerned about the number of employees, the salaries that they are making. And then, you know, as Armando said, one has been on leave for seven months and still getting paid. And then is this person going to get COLA? Just kind of wanted the council, not kind of, I do am requesting the council to really think about our human resources and our financial budget for the town. And I, I don't know that the town really knows or needs all the people. So Public Works actually has eight employees. Financial Department has two positions, and at least that's what the roster says. And then you have administrators who are making well over six figures. And, you know, many are asking why, how, you know? So i- if you would please, as a council, think about that before increasing more salaries. Can the town afford it?
Thank you. Question, questions from the council? Councilmember Frios? Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
No questions right now.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Um, no.
Councilmember Sabatia?
No questions.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to approve a resolution applying a four percent cost of living allowance COLA to the city salaries for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Freeman, seconded by Councilmember Sabatia. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Frios. Mayor Pro Tem Freeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sabatia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Sure. Is that an extra battery?
I think so. You have to try it out and see if it.
Please sit by all. We're experiencing technical difficulties.
And they're giving out landowners. It's not just that you get the bad one every time.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, action items. Six A, approve the appointment of Attorney John R. Giffen as city attorney and negotiate and negotiation of an agreement with Kennedy, Archer, and Giffen as a professional corporation, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, tonight is last night that the city will be represented by the Wellington Law Firm, which has represented San Juan Batista since two thousand and six. George C. Thatcher, uh, between two thousand and fifteen, uh, and Deb Mall between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-two, and, and Mr. Robert W. Rathie, uh, until he announces resignation as city attorney May fifteenth, to be effective on August fifteenth. On June thirtieth, the city published a notice inviting proposals from qualified law firms. And, uh, at the August, at the July eighteenth council meeting, Mayor Jordan and Councilmember Sabatia were appointed as an ad hoc selection committee. The RFQ closed on the twenty-eighth, and two firms were interviewed, one on Friday, August fourth, and the second on August eighth. So in interviewing the two firms, uh, the subcommittee, uh, uh, spent at least an hour with each firm. We used seventeen different questions, uh, the same questions were asked of each, uh, covering all issues of municipal law, from litigation and Brown Act and fair political practices, uh, to include environmental and secret experience, um, and, and other writing ordinances, and actually just attending and being at council meetings. The Kennedy, Archer, and, and Giffen, uh, has experience, uh, and was recommended by the committee. John R. Giffen is here tonight with us, and Ryan Seadonan was also interviewed. Uh, Ryan served as a deputy city attorney for the city of Monterey for four years. And, uh, John Griffin, Giffen has experience with the city of Carmel and representing FORA, which is the Forwarded Reuse Authority, and included a lot of land use, uh, experience there and some litigation. So, um, we checked references. We got an outstanding, uh, re- recommendation from both the mayor of Carmel and the by the sea and the city manager. Both recommended stuff that we'd be well served if we went forward with, uh, the Kennedy, Archer, and Giffen. And if the council would like, we can have John speak tonight, or, or say hello, or introduce himself, or, or be able to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Attorney Giffen, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'm delighted, thrilled really to be selected, um, council. Manager Reynolds, Bob Rathie, I know well, um, and clerk, deputy clerk Soto, and members of the public. Uh, we're, we're really excited to, to go forward. Um, our firm does have a wealth of experience. I've been practicing over thirty years, uh, and in a variety of different municipal law capacities. Uh, I was interim city attorney for the city of Carmel by the sea. Had a great relationship with the council and the mayor, um, and, and the city manager. And then served almost a little over ten years with the Forwarded Reuse Authority. We have a really great team at our firm, both support-wise and attorney-wise, uh, representing, uh, this, in the airport district, Monterey County Airport District. So, um, we are, I think, very well-equipped to serve your legal needs going forward. I look forward to, uh, working with each and every one of you. Um, I'll work hard to, uh, get to know the community, uh, which is really charming and historic. And, uh, we're just really excited to, to be able to go forward with you.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Frios?
Uh, just, uh, welcome aboard. And if I just might clarify something, we're not hiring another attorney. We are hiring a new attorney to replace Mr. Rathie. So I just want to make sure everybody in the public knows that we're not stacking city hall with attorneys. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for that.
And a little bit different than Carmel, we actually wave here. You know, so, and, and we have street addresses, so.
That's a really a benefit I could tell.
Welcome aboard.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Just follow up on what's, uh, councilmember Fril said, uh, welcome, welcome to our town and, uh, ho- hopefully, we won't have too many vaccine problems for you, but we do have a few. You've kind of heard of them already, and well, maybe, no, we weren't in close, you were not in close session, so you didn't hear one of them, but it's there. So have fun at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes, welcome. I'm glad that you're here and that you're happy to be here. I read your packet. I was very, um, excited to, to have your law firm come, because not only you as the principal attorney, you also have a team of other attorneys that have expertise in different areas that I think are very important for our small town. And you did get a kind of a flavor of some things that are ongoing right now. And I know that you have someone on your team that can deal with HR and employee issues, so I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, councilmember Sabatia?
It's nice to see you again, and, and in person, and not just Zoom, even though some of us like Zoom. What, what checked a lot of boxes for me in interviewing you and your, your partner, um, representing your firm, was not just the, the wealth of experience and the, the capacities and, and things you have experienced with. It was clear to myself and the mayor and, and Don, you guys really did your homework when it, when it came to, you know, prepping and getting to know San Juan. You were prepared for that in the ways that you did, and I think that, that personal touch, what I, what I call soft skills, you know, really will, will go a, a long way towards your desire to get to know the community and, and to work with us. So that was, to me, that was almost more important than just checking the boxes of, of the, you know, all the, the legal certifications and the experience.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, it was a pleasure meeting you and, and Ryan. It, great conversations. Uh, I also like that you were totally prepared, um, that, that you're coming from a small-town atmosphere to a small-town atmosphere. Um, and, and that says a lot, and, and the way that you came across, uh, having you sit next to our city manager and across from us is going to be, uh, a wonderful experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Public comment?
No hands raised, Madam Mayor, and no speaker cards received.
Thank you very much. Anything else from the council?
Madam Mayor, if I could just say just a couple of words, I'd like to thank each and every member of the council for the confidence that you've reposed in us over these years of representing San Juan Batista, which has really been a, 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 a challenge and really a pleasure for, for the firm on behalf of Rob Wellington, I know my partner, and also George Thatcher and Deb Mall. Uh, certainly appreciate the, the confidence that you reposed in them as well. And I was hoping to be sitting in this chair a while longer. Things haven't worked out for me, uh, in the way that I'd hoped in that way, but I know that you'll be very well-served by John, his firm, I think is excellent. They've been great to work with. He's personally, I think, a great guy, and, uh, I think you've made a really good choice. So thank you again for, for everything. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and if I may, uh, thank you for your services, uh, Wellington Law Firm, uh, in general, but, but you sitting here, these, these several lots of months through all of this. We really appreciate all that you've done for us. Thank you. May I have a, uh, motion to approve? Sorry, did you have one more? Sorry, Councilmember Frios? No. Yes, we, we haven't, we have him until midnight. Let's see how long we can take this meeting. Uh, may I have a motion to approve a, a resolution appointing Mr. John R. Giffen as its city attorney? Attorney authorize the city to negotiate an agreement between the city and Kennedy, Archer, Giffen, PC, and bring the agreement to the council for ratification.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, motion made by Councilmember Sabatia, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Freeman. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Frios?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sabatia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Welcome. Six B, Planning Commissioner Historic Resource Board vacancy. Receive a recommendation from the ad hoc committee to fill a vacancy for a term ending December twenty-twenty-six. Report from city manager?
Um, we, uh, only, we submitted one application, uh, to the committee approximately a week ago, and they met, um, Wednesday or Thursday, I'm not sure.
Thursday.
Thursday, and I'll let the committee speak for themselves on this matter.
Thank you. The ad hoc committee was made up of Mayor Pro Tem Freeman and Councilmember Morris Lopez.
I guess I'll start. We had a great two and a half hour meeting. It was lots of vertigo coffee, and it was friendly and enjoyable, but we were unable to arrive at any one recommendation, so um, we, we don't have a recommendation to make to the city council.
Correction, I have a recommendation. You don't.
Can you pull the mic? No, sorry, pull the micro, just pull the microphone closer.
The committee did not make a recommendation. One person.
Yeah, uh, well.
Sorry, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem, can we please let Councilmember Morris Lopez speak? Thank you.
As we did meet, it was very pleasant, two and a half hours. Um, we did have long discussion about the sole applicant or candidate. Uh, we extended the, um, recruitment, um, phase, I think, once uh, the original applicant was the only applicant on the first go-out to the public. So I feel personally that there was plenty of time and opportunity for anyone in the community that so wished to come forward and be considered for this appointment, did not show up. We had one individual who I count as resubmitting her application after there was an extension. I take that as being very clean and enthused to sit as an appointee. No one else came forward. As I stated, you and I respectfully disagreed on the recommendation, and I am recommending that this applicant be considered by the entirety of the council for a vote.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Frios? Oh, sorry. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Freeman? Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Command the applicant. Uh, we're not naming the person. I don't know why, but I'm making the recommendation to the entire council to consider. This is our appointee. We have extended the, the recruitment, uh, process twice, and I feel it's time to have a fifth-seeded, uh, planning commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sabatia?
Were there a set of interview questions or, or just questions about the, I guess, extended conversation, but was?
There was no interview, uh, and so there was no interview questions. We went, we went over the record. I, I guess I did have a comment, and I, I didn't quite spit it out. I'm comfortable having a four-person planning commission, and if there's an occasional two-to-two tie, so be it.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else?
Thank you. Um, I'm confused at why there were no interviews. But we have been without a planning commissioner for, since the uh, uh, June ninth meeting, and we only had three at the August first meeting. Question to the council, how long are we gonna prolong this? Um, the applicant, uh, is Yolanda Delgado. Um, she has served on the Planning Commission Historic Resources Board before, uh, and nobody else has applied. Um, I say we move forward. Questions, comments, concerns from Zoom?
We have one. We have two hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Um, I actually wanted to apply, but I was told that the time period had closed, so thereby, uh, application was not submitted. Just as an FYI, there's interest, but I don't know how far or how much advertisement or notice was given to the public to, um, notify them that there is a vacancy. So, anyway, just letting you know, I, I did want to apply, but I was told that it was closed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we had another hand raised, but it went away. And, uh, no, uh, speaker cards received in chambers. Oh.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Uh, Rochelle Egan, resident of San Juan Batista. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Um, I am not speaking as staff. I am speaking as myself. Uh, regarding March twenty-twenty-one until December twenty-twenty-two, I have maintained my silence, and I'm going to watch the clock run out because I will not speak publicly about your applicant. I have very strong feelings about the applicant.
Thank you.
Is this a thing?
Exactly.
Just checking, just.
That's checking. I will give back my last minute and simply say you do not want this woman representing this town in any way, shape, or form based on how she treats staff and residents of this town. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Further questions, comments, concerns by council?
Mayor, Mayor, I do recall, uh, speaking to Ida, and my, uh, direction to Ida was we had to go through this process and exhaust the applicants we've received, and if the council wants to reopen this, we can reopen, and she can apply then. But because of the deadline had passed, so I encouraged her to reapply, should it reopen.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Uh, further comments from council? Councilmember Frios?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to see the application period reopened.
Thank you.
We get another choice. I'm concerned, as our librarian is, is, um, the toxicity of the specific, um, applicant and how poorly the specific applicant treats our staff. Sometimes it's almost the point of a violent workplace. Like, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
And your time's up. Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Uh, um, thank you, Scott. I couldn't have said it better myself. Uh, I, I agree. And I especially agree on reopening it, and
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
I think I made myself very clear. I think that, um, neighbors and personal issues outside of the realm of the dais and in your positions as staff, and you want to come to the, the podium as a resident. I feel that personal issues with said neighbors or community members are not for me to decide. This person has been the chair when I was the seated planning commissioner. There were some, um, differences in how people communicate, but I don't feel that personal and issues behind the scenes are what should be considered here. And I don't take the view that this person is creating any workplace violence. We did hear of an individual that came up to our podium tonight where there is a real issue that really concerns me. Um, I feel that as a general planning commission member, there's a chair and a vice chair. Sometimes people can have a different way of communicating when they're in a different position. Um, I enjoyed working with her. I didn't always agree with her style of communication, but everybody is amenable to change and, and, uh, positive criticism or feedback. So no one else has, um, come forward, and I feel that we're, we're doing what I don't like that San Juan has a habit of doing, changing the rules depending on the individuals, and I do not promote that, and that's why I ran, and that's my platform.
Thank you. Councilmember Sabatia?
I, I have a lot to say on this subject. I will spare all of us. I sat on a previous ad hoc committee where the individual was, was considered and made my feelings clear then. I believe we should open it, open it back up, and see what other applications we might get.
Thank you. I'm kind of on the same page as Councilmember Morris Lopez. Uh, I think Zoom did everybody a disservice. Uh, I think when she sat on the dais, uh, before COVID, she asked a lot of questions, um, brought up a lot of questions that were, uh, pertinent and relevant, and that's probably redundant. And, um, questions that nobody else asked. Uh, and, and this has been going on for far too long, and there was one other thing you said that I agreed with, but, um, anyway, uh, I'll open up the floor to make a motion to receive the recommendation from the ad hoc committee to fill the vacancy for a term ending December twenty-twenty-two.
There was no recommendation from the committee.
Thank you. I will take, uh, a, a motion to, uh, go ahead.
Committee is two people. Um, pro-term mayor did not, he did not have consensus. He did not recommend. I did recommend. So to say entirely that we did not recommend is false. I recommend.
Thank you. Uh, a motion to accept the application for Yolanda Delgado to, uh, fill the vacancy for a term ending December twenty-twenty-two. Six. Where am I? Holy moly. December twenty-twenty-six.
So moved.
Thank you. I'll second it. Um, motion made to appoint Yolanda Delgado as the Planning Commissioner Historic Resource Board member, uh, made by Morris Lopez, seconded by, uh, Mayor Jordan. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Frios?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
No.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Sabatia?
No.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion to open, to reopen the application period for uh, period, city manager.
What would you suggest? Two weeks? Um, Liz, I'm asking the deputy.
Yep, saw that.
Yes.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Uh, to reopen the applica- application period for a two-week timeframe and date. Anybody have a calendar open?
Liz, fifteenth, two weeks, and the twenty-ninth.
Till August twenty-ninth. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Frios?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez? Councilmember Sabatia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Adopt a strategic plan Adopt the strategic plan. And high-level organizational, financial and public safety review. Approve a resolution adopting a new city strategic plan and high-level organizational, financial and public safety review. And its recommended core finding as city policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. Uh the report on tonight's agenda is a culmination of more than six months of hard work. Uh by the citizens of San Juan Batista, participating in interviews and and community meetings and Saturday mornings at the library. Um all hosted by uh Citygate and Associates. Citygate and Associates has uh been helping uh. Public administration reorganize. Um their expertise, especially in public safety. And uh this time the city asked them to come and do a high-level organizational review. Uh of our organization, a financial review and a review of public safety. And a lot of these uh recommendations from the work that we did culminating June third. Uh wound up in our budget. Um so with that, it's time to accept their completed report and Stacy Bristow is here. To present and you'll see her presentation coming online. And she's gonna simplify uh all this data in this hundred-page report. So uh we can all make sense of it. She promised me this afternoon she'd do that for us, so. So with that, uh Stacy, I'll let you go ahead. Thank you for coming.
Hi and welcome. Back, welcome back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
My new best friend. Okay.
Thank you.
We good?
We're good.
Awesome, okay. Uh thank you, city manager. So um. Mayor, city council, city manager, um city staff, community members, thank you. It's wonderful to be back here. Uh my fourth trip. I actually brought my mother this time. We made significant donations to many of the stores and restaurants today, so um. I don't think I'll be bringing her back because that costs a lot of money, no. Think they were all on her anyway, so um thank you, wonderful community, but I I just wanted to share, she's visiting for the summer and I said you have to come to this town. Um because it's wonderful, so she's enjoying it and we're gonna, we're gonna tour the mission tomorrow, so. Um with that, um thank you again for being here. Um Andy Green, the financial. Uh guru and consultant is available online too, so if we have any questions. Um regarding the financial elements to this report, uh he'll be available to us as well, so thank you, Andy. Um I'll bring you up in just a couple of minutes. And with that, this is about a ten-minute overview of the final report. I believe you have copies of the final report in front of you. Um so I'll walk through this presentation. It won't be a walkthrough specifically page by page of the report. Because it's eighty-five pages, you're welcome. Um however, we'll go through about a dozen slides. Um and give some highlights and then we'll go from there and answer questions, okay? Um so with that, um just a quick recap, I think um our city manager just did that. But there was a request for a high-level organizational, financial, public safety review. Um and with that process, we did a review of the data. Um and the documentation that the city provided, conducted surveys and interviews, workshops, town halls, trainings. Obviously created mission, vision, values, the core priorities, um conducted a high-level analysis. With that, we came up with eleven overall themes um that we heard and understood. We developed a strategic worksheet and then a comprehensive eighty-four-page final report that you have in your hands today. I do want to go back just for a second. Uh we did do an implementation element that was an add-on to the strategic plan. Where myself and the city manager and city staff worked on um compiling the information from the worksheet. And discussing how we're gonna prioritize them, what that looks like, et cetera. There were a hundred and five goals ultimately that were created through that worksheet, which actually is a good number, it sounds like a lot, but it's only a hundred and five. Um tier one came up seventy-six votes, tier two was twenty-nine, tier three lower priority was ten. Um you'll note, maybe the numbers don't add up, that's because some of the year, some of the votes cast over multiple years. And what I will say, what one of the most impressive elements to this, that over twenty of these items have already been initiated. Um as you know, we did our personality styles training and you have an activator as a city manager. And this is probably the most initiated action items um I've seen with the city that I've worked with, so. I'm pretty impressed that a lot of these items have already been um in place and are working um towards success, so um very impressive with all of that. The eleven overall themes that came about from the assessments. Theme one um by far was improvement and protection of water quality. None of these will come to a surprise to council. We talked through all of these in the meetings. Um this is for the community members. Investment in infrastructure, sewer, roads, streets, sidewalks and curves. Theme three was establishing appropriate staffing levels in various areas. Theme four was the implementation of thoughtful, smart economic development, specifically downtown. Um this leads to the general plan amendments and discussions regarding what type of growth, what makes sense, what are the benefits surrounding that, et cetera. Having workshops with the council, so the the all of that is encompassed within theme four. And of course, of course zoning regulations and conditions of approval that would apply. Theme five was the enhancement of business partnerships, various incentives, communications and process improvements. Enhancements and incentives could be things like facade improvements or grants, um forgivable loans, those kinds of things to the downtown area. So it's sort of looking at that, processing improvements. What does the expedited processes look like for processing applications for um expansions, those kinds of things? Theme six was the enhance um. Excuse me, enhancement of recreation activities for all with a focus on youth and seniors. Theme seven was the revitalization of downtown area, including cleanliness, vacant lots, parking, aesthetics, lighting, landscaping and signage. Theme eight was the general enhancement of communication with city staff, volunteers. Including messaging updates, website, other marketing opportunities. As you know, some of these things were already um happening. Um the city manager himself has been getting out to more of the community and meeting with people. There's um quarterly updates that are gonna be coming, um looking at um how to. Put better communication on the front of the website, so things are already in the works, that was one of them. Theme nine that came was the public safety review, including the sheriff's department partnership, code enforcement and current security services. There's already been a lot of traction there. Um I won't repeat. Uh theme ten disaster preparedness related to flooding, fires and state mandates. And theme eleven was the fragmentation of the San Juan Batista Community Business Association. Um that resulted in sort of two competing groups um and the emotional um challenges that surround that. So within the report, um there were uh ten strategic um recommendations. All of these recommendations are in the spreadsheet and the strategic uh worksheet that we have. Recommendation one was prioritizing uh economic development. There are a variety of different things in here, I won't go into detail in all of them. However, I did highlight the the last bullet, evaluate funding opportunities, including a citywide fee assessment. Um an adoption program, benefit districts, facility districts. Uh I highlight this just because. You know, we always want to look at those funding opportunities to support all of these types of economic development. Um and so there's about seven or eight bullets here. Recommendation two was the review of public safety. Again, a lot of this has already um been accomplished or in the works. Um hiring a public safety coordinator position. Uh filling the the vacant sheriff's position, considering removing security services and then of course evaluating recruitment and retention packages. Salaries, benefits and other perks. Um you're not alone in this pursuit into this challenge. Um we work with a lot of jurisdictions. And they're all having challenges in this recruitment area, especially around public safety, so. Uh there's a lot of opportunity here to be creative and sort of think about, um you know, what other. Um retention packages and different things that we can offer and what other perks are out there, so uh lots of opportunity in that one. Recommendation number three was to prioritize the general plan updates and workshops. This was mentioned also in. The economic development area. Um but but this is an opportunity where you can sit down and talk about. Um you know, and evaluate the feedback that was received from the community as it relates to. Um growth in your community. As you recall, there was about half the community members that stated they were interested in. Um in having more growth or they were happy with the current growth. And the other half thought there was already too much growth, so not uncommon in jurisdictions, especially smaller ones, but. Um there's more opportunity there for you to talk about. Um as growth occurs, whether that's businesses coming in or a new development, what are the benefits um to the community? How can you capture the appropriate fees and those kinds of things? So those are the workshops, you know, coming forth to talk about those. Recommendation number four was strengthening fiscal stability and operations, including adopting strong, clear financial policies. Uh Andy's here, we can have him talk to more of that later. Hiring the part-time staff to support the extended hours of operation, which was a a big request from the community, as you may remember. Um adopting a five-year revenue enhancement program. And once again, you'll see this repeated a few times, is conducting a fee assessment. It's tradition and best practice to have um fee assessments done every three years and include an escalation clause with those fee assessments. I have seen jurisdictions where they've done fee assessments every two years. Um annually is a little tough, but um every three years is best practice, so just something to be aware of. The escalation clause also helps. And that can be evaluated um each time as well. Recommendation number five, increasing parks and recreation activities, including a newly positioned. Considering a full-time parks and recreation position. There's always opportunities, if those positions can't be filled, to look at limited-term types of positions. Also, taking a look at facilitate facilitating a volunteer-based Parks and Recreation Action Committee. Um there's a lot of committees and groups and people like to have a lot of discussions about things, but I think action is the word here. Um and what are those committees um that can support best? Um moving in the direction of implementing the different parks and recreation activities that you're interested in. And then involving um the Parks and Recreation staff and supporting some of the economic development roles and responsibilities. There's a lot of overlap there, so something to consider um as you move forward with those committees. Recommendation number six was enhancing communication with the community visitors and city. Uh the quarterly updates have already been talked about. Um the implementation plan worksheet and increasing community engagement with the city manager, which he's already working on. Um lots of different opportunities and of course um neighborhood gatherings as well. Improving and protecting water quality, continuing to seek out federal, state and local funding. Um I I highlighted the second bullet, that you know, the utilization of volunteers and commissions, but also. Um the education effort, there often is a missed opportunity where you can have a lot of educational opportunities that are sort of low cost. And this is where a lot of your volunteers and commissions can come into. Um you know, there's a lot of jurisdictions have things, you know, that talk about, hey, we want to improve our water or we want to save water or. You know, this is the week where, you know, we talk about, you know, healthy water or drinking more water. Um there's a lot of different efforts that can go into the education component. Um that are low cost, that volunteers can participate in, so just something to to keep in mind. Um and then of course, any policies or zoning regulations that can improve and protect while water quality as you go forward, especially in agricultural communities such as this. Recommendation number eight, uh prioritize financial resources for key projects. Um I think this is an awesome one and one that stands out. Um in my book, allocating at least ten percent of the city's annual unassigned general fund revenues. You're in a good financial place. Andy spoke to this in great detail um on our last visit, but this ten percent is where you can. Be able to pull, you know, disaster preparedness, um the economic development goals, all those things that you want to implement. Um you know, utilizing those funds for those such things um would be a huge benefit. Improving infrastructure, um that's something we've talked about, this is well-known, uh but having a plan for it. Having a strategic plan makes sense, you know, a lot of times we want to, you know, patch the holes or do things quickly and respond to the community, which is important. Especially when it's related to health and safety. Um however, having a plan in place can often be more strategic, um and there's often funding um that goes along with those, so. Um other things to consider. Recommendation number ten, to strengthen community business association relationships. Um this speaks to theme eleven, uh the San Juan Batista Community Association. Uh whether that's facilitating mediation discussions. Um or further investigating other alternatives to unite, reform or partner with um these nonprofit organizations. Um it's a very united community in a lot of ways. Um and so, you know, this is one of the the challenges, there has to be a few. Um for you to sort of take a deep dive and look at into um as leaders in this community. With that, um when I mentioned the eighty-four-page report, that sounds a little daunting. Most people don't want to read an eighty-four-page report. As you know, we did the um. The the training on the different personality styles, so there's gonna be some of those green personalities that are excited about the eighty-four-page report and they're gonna highlight and have lots of questions. You know who you are. And um but within that report, we thought it would be helpful for the community. We have um an executive. Um summary and an executive brief. There's an executive brief that is one page. It's literally a snapshot of everything in the report. It's something you can post on a poll, you can post at the ice cream shop, you can have it at the library. You can email it to people, it's it's a quick, you know, sort of down and dirty of, you know, what all this meant. Then there's the executive summary that's more like five pages and it gives you the themes and the recommendations, it's a little longer. The one I'm most excited about and that um has, the draft has just come um to your city manager. And will be coming out to the public probably in the next week or so, is our odd mod. So that is an audio module, it's an audio podcast, so it's all um audio. So it's about twenty-five minutes and the entire report is all audio. So you can listen to it while you're working out, because it's quite inspiring. You can listen to it um. On your walk to work, um you can listen to it in your car, but it's a wonderful way for the community who's not interested in reading or has a challenge in doing so. Just to listen and hear. Um it's one of our um executive staff at headquarters. Um who specializes in this area and actually was the production manager for this. He interviewed me, um and he brought up some key points in the report. Um it sounded awesome, I got to listen to it this morning. Dawn just received it, so he hasn't even had a chance to listen to it. Um so once he's viewed, embedded it, um it will come out. It will be available on anyone's phone, tablet, um iPad, um home computer. All of those things and with a QR code, so somebody literally can just click on it and it'll be available, so. Um excited to hear that. So lots of good ways to communicate. Um is something that we heard and it was something your city manager um was passionate about making sure that when we presented this report that we printed on. Presented alternatives um for everybody in the community um to receive. I do bring this up again, you know how passionate I am about the fail facts and execution. Um you know, these are things that that challenge every community, um you know, when they're trying to execute these things. Everything is a priority syndrome, we've talked about it before. You know, we want to change things on the fly, like, oh, we have a new idea, we want to do this, this and this. Well, great, you have a hundred and five other goals that you already agreed upon. So you know, it's just one of those things that are really good reminders of as you move forward, it helps to maybe point to these things to say, hey. You know, we've got to be patient, you know, we've we've got a list. Um you know, we've got to allocate some resources, we've got to be communicating with our leadership what we want, so it's just some mindfulness to some of the things that. Um sometimes occurs, um you know, when we're implementing such plans. One of the things that um stands out, there's a lot of these, you have copies, but um number twelve, some failures or successes. Um we don't always get right everything the first time, you know, sometimes it's a little trial and error, so it's, you know, asking for forgiveness, but. Um just mindful that, you know, we're gonna try some things and sometimes they'll work and sometimes not. Um but sometimes those failures are successes, so just wanted to remind that, implementing best practices. You're very clear on your goals, you have a plan, it's awesome. Your commitment to the story, we did some great training about, you know, what is the story? What is the San Juan Batista story? What do you want other people to know your story to be? Um are you all on the same story? You know, what does that look like? Um and it's important, the message is important. You know, my mom has a story now that, you know, she's come here. You know, everybody was so friendly and the shopping was wonderful and she agrees on the best restaurant in town and, you know, all those wonderful things that come up and so. You know, what does that story look like? And you know, sort of being on the same page with that story. Um you have great alignment with your culture. Um I love that you, you know, jumped in and and did the executive training. Creating a really good environment for for your staff, um being thoughtful to being realistic. Um embrace flexibility, things are gonna change, that happens. Um and take time to uh reflect and with that, I'll take a breath. And something to drink and Andy's online as well to answer questions and I'm available. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, well done.
I was told ten fifteen minutes, so.
Questions, comments, concerns from uh council? Council member Frails?
Thank you. And thank you for the recap. Um I was really happy to see that. A lot of items that were discussed and were brought up, we've either started or we finished. So we're a little ahead of the game, which is nice. I was also happy to hear from. An outside party that financially that we're. We're doing pretty well. Which is of course a relief after what we went through the last three or four years. My only. My only problem is I I I have no problem with saying I was. Incredibly confused through the whole tiering system and the priority system. I I was overwhelmed. And it's just, to me, it just started getting just so ridiculous. And we have. In the one section, there must be sixty things that are a priority. That people won't have done tomorrow. It's like, I I I just, it that was, that could be from a person that comes from the incident command system where I only deal with five to seven. Issues. There was a hundred issues out there and it was like. No, this isn't gonna help. So that that overwhelmed me a bit. Um but all in all, I I I appreciate the. There's honesty. I wish I could have seen. Of the people who did respond to the surveys, who were residents? Who were business owners? And who were non-residents? Um I would have been, it would be kind of nice to see that, just out of curiosity and where they think um. But uh all in all, I I, you know, thank you, appreciate the hard work of you. It's a ton of work, appreciate it.
Thank you. Council member, uh Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Thank you. It it it's an excellent report. And I I I I'm basically in agreement with Scott on it. What I really appreciate is um. You you're you're talking about how we need to economically get a little stronger uh by redeveloping our downtown. You're talking about how we need to economically get a little stronger by redeveloping our downtown. And possibly some other areas also. And I appreciate that because that's kind of the controversial subject in every, every community is, is growth and. And so I appreciate you taking that on and not being afraid of it. And I appreciate the whole report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Hey Stacy, thank you. Nice report. I'm kind of a basics person, being one of the newer council members just since January. I always feel like going back to basics and I really appreciate that the report highlighted some of those key principles. Like redoing our fees, which I think is also a way to get instant money. Instead of a long-term goal of development, whether it's brick and mortar or doing something downtown. I mean, I really think that we don't charge enough. I'm really happy that you pointed that out. Best practices is to, you know, it's a little work, but I think it's, it's time, you know, and we should stratify how much we charge. You know, a maybe a, a ice cream store versus someone coming in like a medical office is just an example. Or something else and we can stratify fees, we can increase fees. I like the fact that you have also gone out there and really tried to work with us is. How we can communicate, how we can build better relationships. Sometimes we just get kind of walked out on just numbers and statistics, but. It's really how we communicate and how we are receptive to the community. That's important as well. But I think that it's really good news that we are doing well fiscally. That's really great. And this was a really big report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sebastian.
It shouldn't be a surprise to anyone that my personal personality evaluation made the group activities challenging. But I do appreciate that those kinds of things can be illuminating for groups of people who are trying to work together. And you were able to tease a lot of technicality and, you know, a lot of our vegetables and with. Us getting to know each other. So I really appreciated that and it's informed a lot of how Don was able to move forward and, you know. Reconfigure staffing, reconfigure how we do things, showing us where our strengths, where our weaknesses were. So I appreciated the entire activity. Even if it did highlight some of my personality deficiencies.
Did you call them deficiencies? No. Thanks for the report. Thanks for all the time you have spent here. From the very beginning, getting involved with the community, sitting down and talking to whomever would talk to you. Is, is pretty amazing and you don't always find that from consultants. It was awesome that you. Eaked out all of our strengths and weaknesses. You know, sometimes we all like to hide stuff and, and it was really nice to see everybody. Participating during the workshop on. I don't remember what day that was, but we had residents in there and that was pretty awesome, sharing thoughts. The themes are kind of spot on. I mean, I remember hearing a lot of this. Over and over and over. And over again. So it, it shows that us as a council, us as a city. And a community are kind of all on the same page and we do want to. Grow smartly and we do want to beautify our downtown and we do want to be that. Big time little city that we are and still keep all of our quaintness. How many were? In the first year, 79, 76?
Yeah, 76.
Priorities?
Yeah, which is uncommon.
Good.
And then the first tier is 18 months long and it doesn't mean things don't shift because many of those. If you look at the worksheet are multi-year, they'll take three or four years. So, you know, it may seem daunting, but if you, you know, take off 10 that have already been accomplished. Take off 10 or 15 that are multi-year, you know, it sort of brings it down a little bit, sounds a little bit better. So maybe 40-ish.
Good luck. We do have some things to work on and. The, the one that sticks out strongly for me is the recommendation, strategic recommendation. Number 10, which goes along with theme 11. We'll get there. We'll get there. One day at a time. I appreciate everything that you have done for us, for our city manager, working with everybody. And, and the time that your whole group has spent here. It's, it's been good, I think, for everybody. And I appreciate you. Thank you. Welcome, Mom. Comments from. The public. Do we have? Any hands raised? We do. You want me to take this or you want to? Caravan. Hang on one second while we get you in here.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. I too had an opportunity to read the report. And did participate in some of the activities as a resident. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things from the citizen survey. In response to Scott Freels, I think just about all of the people who responded to the survey said that they were residents. And half of. What I found interesting is that more than half of those responding to the survey commute, commute to work. So that was kind of interesting. And then on the question, how fast should the city's population grow? Those who thought it should be moderate growth was 31.8%. But if you take the slow and very slow together, that was 51.3% of the respondents. Some people thought it was growing too fast, 46.8%. And then in the questions, and I'm just highlighting the things that were of interest to me. The three things that people, or top three things that people liked best was one, small town feel. Two, sense of community and three, historic allure. And then the biggest three top concerns were water quality. Staff or leadership capability, which I think is being addressed. And number three was growing too fast. So as you can see, there's. Quite a bit of concern about the rate of our, the growth in our city. And that's all I really wanted to mention is I did enjoy looking at the pie charts and some of the, and the, you know. Analysis of the various responses. So I want to thank the consultants as well. Thank you.
Thank you. No public comment? Oh, spit your cards. Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Andy Green, I just wanted to see if he wanted to add anything because I think he's been waiting, he's been on the Zoom for a while. And I just wanted to double check to see if he had anything he wanted to add because he was such a huge participant in this process and I really always appreciate working with him. Andy, did. Did you have anything to add?
Not, not really anything that you haven't touched on at least. Again, from a financial perspective, the city there, as you had pointed out, is doing fairly well. One of the things that I am a real strong proponent of is the longer-term fiscal planning. Just keeping in mind that, you know, getting to where you are. And staying where you are or benefiting and growing even more financially. Takes a long-range plan, be it, you know, strategic plan and financial planning. We mentioned the CIP and the like, so. I would just, again, just emphasize the longer-term aspects of, of the plan, any plan that you put together. And thank you for having us.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you. Back to the council. Councilmember Freels. Mayor Pro Tem Freeman.
Thank you, Andy, for reminding us of the value of plans and Stacy too. You know, so we've always, in my, back of my mind, I've always had a plan to do this and this and that and. And so, so I appreciate people who try and plan things out. It makes things work better in the long run, in my opinion. So, so thank you. I'm, I'm not a budget guru like Andy or, or, or Michelle Sebastian, so. I'm going to leave it to those people to figure out the best software and, you know, best way to jiggle the money between accounts. But I, I, I think we're on the right path. Thank you.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
No further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Sebastian.
No further comments. Thank you again.
Thank you. Andy, thanks for chiming in on the financials. I did make a whole bunch of comments on all of the recommendations under the financials. In, in the beginning of the packet and. It sounds like we need a, we have a little homework to do there, but it's nice to hear that all of these findings. That we are fiscally sound. That, that's huge. I mean, I'm sure that's comforting to. Anybody who's paying attention to this meeting, that the city is, is solid on, on that ground. Again, appreciate your, your firm, appreciate both of you. Thanks for coming back. You're welcome anytime, Mom. Excuse me? Thank you. Stacy, again, thank you so much for all you've done.
You're welcome. It's been an honor to serve you all. Thank you.
We were looking at a resolution.
Yep.
Thank you, man.
I'm on it. Just have to find my paper. So may I have a motion to approve a resolution adopting a new city strategic plan and high-level organizational. Financial and public safety review and its recommended core findings as city policy.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Sebastian, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Freeman. May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And if I can get concurrence from the council to take a five minute. Thank you.
Five minutes.
And that was at the Steinbeck Community Center in Salinas a couple of weeks ago. And it was a really nice presentation. Former Senator Far, Sam Farr spoke. Former supervisor Bob Tiffany was there and Margie Barrios. So a lot of local people were the keynote speakers and of course our local legend, Mr. Luis Valdez also gave a very inspirational speech. A lot of, okay, sorry, a lot of local people were there and attended and I actually ended up sitting with them next to some old high school friends. And Assemblymember Rivas's mother is actually an old high school classmate of mine, so that was really nice to see her. And then I actually attended a pretty cool conference two weekends ago up at St. Francis Retreat. It was from a nonprofit out of San Jose that was honoring Composinos, the female farm workers. And it was a two-day conference and it was well-attended, but I have to say I was disappointed. I was the only local elected official there. It was pretty last minute notice, so that could have been why a lot of us weren't there. But it was a really well, well, well-organized event, but they were from out of the county. Hopefully our county can maybe get on board with doing something like that. They discussed issues with legal assistance, with immigration and citizenship applications. And also real important was housing, which is something on our radar that we need to talk about inclusive farmworker housing, separate from low income and that designation. It's specifically for farmworkers. A lot of them live in substandard housing, which is still acceptable in 2023, which is just really egregious. I also met last Friday with Senator Ana Caballero's district director, Ana Velazquez, who reached out to me and I met with her briefly at Vertigo. And she actually is also the mayor of the city of Solidad, which is pretty cool. So I met with her and that was very, very relaxed and very informal, but made a new connection. So I really appreciated that. So those are my unformal meetings, but looking forward to the COG on Thursday with Councilmember Freels and the next maybe September meeting of the Intergovernmental Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sebastian.
I attended the Lafco meeting on the fourth. The fourth or the eighth?
The other day.
One of those days, a Thursday.
It was.
I got that one right. There was a report about municipal service reviews, MSRs, which I thought was pretty informative. It's, it's nice that these things are being looked into. They're looking at the different water regions in, in the county and how they all interact with Hollister's wastewater programs. So I thought that was pretty interesting and informative. I was disappointed. The mayor and I were collaborating on, on this issue. When you listen to, and I'm sure it's the same or similar with a lot of the other committees that other council members and the mayor are on. When you listen to them talk, it's all in service of Hollister. That's how they speak. That's how they say things. We would be, we as a city of San Juan Batista would be lucky to be considered a footnote in a lot of this, which not in a, in a negative way, but I, I take offense to that. And I think we, both of us, the mayor and I are, are in agreement that we are, we are going to tell them with kindness and remind them that we are here and that we pay our way in a lot of these things. And so these issues should be looked at as, as, you know, the city of San Juan being a partner and a contributor to a lot of these, these issues. And the things that are getting decided concern us. And so we should be thought of in those, in those things, even in the way they casually speak about the issues. But as I mentioned, we were, mayor and I were collaborating on and aligning our questions as we were asking questions of, of the committee and through that lens. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Just to tag along on the Lafco meeting. This is the first time that Lafco has actually had an opportunity to do work in eight months, nine months. And the MSR Municipal Services Review for the wastewater plant is the first to come up. So it has been discussed a lot at council meetings and for the city of Hollister. Mayor Pro Tem Freeman and myself and the city manager attended one a month ago. We attended another one just a couple of weeks ago on the status of the wastewater and the wastewater plant. And fortunately we have our in already. We've been approved for our connection. Lafco has approved us for our connection. So not being part of that whole conversation sometimes is a good thing. There was a, we were not well-received by the community of Hollister. Going into what some refer to the Hollister wastewater plant as a regional plant. So it's nice to see that that's the first MSR that, that goes forward and adding several other small water systems in there for, for wastewater. We, we have we have approved a city, an attorney for left outside council for Lafco. We're still working out the details for that. We do have to go forward and look for a new executive officer. We are currently using Monterey County Lafco as our executive officer. And Derek Main has been doing a phenomenal job, but that contract is short-lived. So if anybody out there wants to be an executive officer of Lafco, please sign up. We do have a conference coming up in October and I think everybody on the, the committee will be attending that. I think that's all that really happens substantively wise at Lafco. And I missed the Water Resources Association meeting for conflicting meeting with the EDCIC. Did you, you attended that, correct, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, I did. And it was the usual water resources meeting. We went over turf removal and things like that. It, it was not particularly.
Nothing big, nothing new?
Nothing bigger, nothing new. It was just kind of the same old, same old, which is why I didn't talk about it very much.
Thank you very much. That's all the updates. City Council announcements. This is an opportunity for council and staff to share the community calendar and announce upcoming dates of interest to the general public. Councilmember Freels?
I don't have so much interest in dates, but a few congratulations. My wife's nephew, Matthew Ely from Aromas, just obtained his Eagle Scout. Yeah, I forget the troop name, but he did a big project with the American Legion in, in Crondale. There were four, four Eagle Scouts accepted from that troop this, this last week or two weeks ago, which was pretty impressive. And then they asked other Eagle Scouts to stand and there was another four from that troop that just recently had got there. So it's a, it's a pretty amazing little boy scout, you know, scout troop to have eight recent Eagle Scouts, which was pretty cool. I, I'd like to give a, a big congratulations and a thank you to the organizers of the San Juan Day. I'm sure we'll all discuss this. I had a yard sale and I did pretty good. And then I turned around and spent it all over at Lori's, over at Bear's. But it was, it was a great day. I got a chance to get out and about. It was hard when you're doing the yard sale by yourself, but I get a chance to zip around. And then we ended up, my friend Chris McDougall was playing it at Bear's Hideaway and we got to see him play. And then we ended up in the, at the, the Vertigo party, which was really fun. So what a great. That was a great day. It just seemed like it was, people were singing and smiling and it was, it was a good, it was a good day. Lastly, Bob Rathie, I, I just want to thank you for your help. I'm honored to have met you and now know you. We've had a lot of conversations other than municipality, mainly baseball, which was, which is great. And, you know, prayers in your future. Hope you do well. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Councilmember Freels. Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Thank you. Following up on what Scott said, I also thought that the San Juan Day went really well and I really liked it. What I liked about it, it was mostly local people, but we were out and about and shopping. And I too listened to the same group that Scott did at Bear's Hideaway for quite some time. And I noticed that the, the stores and the restaurants I thought were crowded and doing well. And, and that to me, that's the object is, is, this is economic development or, or economic impetus to get things going. Alls I can say is I, I, I just hope they repeat this event again every, every now and then. It can't be every week, obviously, but maybe twice a year or something. I don't know. Yeah.
If I could, I had two people show, actually three people, two people from Los Manos, two groups, and, and a couple from, came all the way from Corstal because they saw our advertisement on Facebook and saw what I was advertising. So it reached a long ways. I mean, that's Corstal, three and a half hours. That was pretty impressive.
On a Sunday. Nice. Thank you for that. Getting down here on 101. Councilmember, Councilmember Morris Lopez?
I don't have any announcements, although I did see something that came across the city email. I think we all got it, which is something of significance. And I don't know too much in our community if it's been an issue, but if it has, it's, it's pretty tragic. August 31st is opioid awareness day. I am, and you can wear a purple shirt or wear a purple tie, a purple ribbon. It's just putting awareness that this is a huge public tragedy right now. And I know that there's been some incidences in our neighboring city in the county of Hollister. There's been a couple of overdoses. You don't hear too much about it. And I think actually one of the individuals did pass from it. And so I think that's coming up, like I said, the end of the month. Be aware, support. Me being a medical professional provider, I would hope that I know that our, probably our firemen have Narcon on board for opioid reversal. And, you know, even it would be a far, not a far-fetched to maybe have City Hall have something. You know, you never know if someone's walking, a tourist, you know, just to be responsive to that. That might be something that we could look into and talk with our new attorney, how we could get that onboard to some key, key locations. I would think City Hall would be a location for that. But other than that, I want to thank Mr. Rathie as well. It was a pleasure meeting you. And I wish you the very best in your retirement, semi-retirement. And thanks all again for your wisdom.
Thank you. Councilmember Sebastian?
Bringing back up again San Juan Day. My wife and I missed most of it as my dad decided that it was the perfect day to be at a car dealership all morning. We were really bummed about that, but just the, just a few hours. We, we got back home in the afternoon around three or four and headed straight over to Vertigo. Did a couple of rounds to see who was still selling things, but headed straight over to Vertigo. And just huge confirmation and reminder of why it's so awesome to live here and why we moved here. Ran into, you know, not everybody, but just about everybody and, you know, arms over shoulders, people teasing each other, hanging out, having fun. Saw some former, a former mayor and a former council member and a current planning commissioner. Just cutting all kinds of rugs and having so much fun. And we just had a, we, we needed that, you know, home feeling and it was a lot of fun. Sad to have missed most of the day, but good to know that most of the day was a whole lot of what we experienced in those last few hours. Hanging out with neighbors and seeing people and having fun. Again, thank you Attorney Rathie. Knew we're on the council, but every interaction that we had was, was great. And I wish you and your family the best.
Thank you. San Juan Day reimagined. Who would have ever have thought that it reimagined like that? Last year it was down Third Street and this year it was the whole entire city and simply amazing. People were riding bikes all over town, walking, people from near and far. Going to every little chicken coop. There was something different to be found at each one and all of the yard sales. I mean, we've had yard sales that on this day for 52 years-ish, maybe more, 56. I don't remember. A lot of years. And I don't think it was ever anything as it was this day. It was simply amazing. Kudos to all of the, the merchants and hospitality folks who stepped up and, and had a coop. Well done. It was more than one could imagine. I missed the night part. I had the great fortune of having a little baby on me so I could take a nap.
Aroma stays.
Aroma stays. What's the date?
It's 27th. Aroma stays. Yeah, I think so. There's music, there's vendors, there's yard sales. It's fun. It's a good time.
Not as fun as San Juan Day.
They're pretty good at it.
They've been doing it for a long time.
And lots of good yard sales too.
Okay. Anything from that side of the?
Just, just a quick announcement, Mayor. It's not an announcement, but a reminder that we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on the 29th to talk about our housing element.
And I'll just say one more. Thank you for all your expressions and I sure have enjoyed working with everyone. And thanks so much for, for the card and, and the nice wishes. I sure appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks again, Bob. What you have brought to, to these chambers is, is amazing. I appreciate you. It's been, it's been a fun ride. Prayers and blessings go along with you. Enjoy, enjoy the new, the new, the new phase, the new quarter. Treasurer's report and monthly financial statements.
Hi, how's it going?
Hi, Michelle. Welcome.
Thank you. Bear with me. I have allergies and I am not feeling 100% today, so I will power through. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Let's jump into a brief overview of the financials. We're now at the month of June, which is the end of the fiscal year. So that's what we're going to be talking about. For general fund, year-to-date, our net effect is currently a positive balance of 684K. The month-over-month change there was a decrease of 114K. So what does that mean? The decrease was mainly related to a reclassification of funds as they were incorrectly posted into the general fund. This happens periodically. It's normal. And that's all we have. Wendy, who's reviewing the financials as well. On the expenditure side, some of the vendors that stood out were McKim Corporation. We do have a contract with them, which was for the pavement project under CIP 2122. MNS engineers, which is our city civil engineer fees. These are monthly, nothing out of the ordinary. Cypress Water Services, which is also monthly and is our sewer operation payment. And then project base would be Joe Landscaping Concrete, which was the retainer for Franklin Circle Park and the monthly maintenance fee as well there. For the Water Enterprise Fund, year-to-date, the net effect is currently a positive balance of 502K. The month-over-month change there was an increase of 46K. Revenues exceeded expenses within reason and expected variances. So nothing out of the ordinary there. For the Sewer Enterprise Fund, year-to-date, the net effect currently is a positive balance of 571K. The month-over-month change there was an increase of 52K, a little bit more than usual. And the increase in revenues was mainly related to the commercial revenues that exceeded the budget when it was prepared. This is not a bad thing. It's just saying that the, the next budget that comes around, they'll be able to incorporate that as well. So we're seeing where the changes are happening. On the expenditure side, no material callouts and everything was in line with expectation. So that's all I have for now unless you have questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Freels?
No questions. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
No questions. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Thank you, Michelle, for the report.
Thank you, Councilmember Sebastian?
No questions.
Thanks, Michelle. Feel better.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Michelle, if you're still.
I'm still here.
Oh, good. Questions, comments, concerns from Zoom or chambers?
About a bear scene, no hands raised and no speaker cars received in chambers.
Thanks, Michelle. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
City managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's city managers' report, we do have representatives here. We have Jose Aranda from the Planning Commission and he's working on a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. And so if he's, if he's able to provide a chair status of the Planning Commission's ad hoc committee, they're reviewing the zoning ordinance related to pop-ups and they had a community meeting. So I don't know, Jose, if you're prepared to say anything on that tonight? And then we also have Chris Martirama here. He's the Chair of the Urban Growth Boundary Sphere of Influence Subcommittee. If, if Chris would like to say a few words, we have a new proposed map and a slide for that. And then of course we have a, a space for the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department before I get into just a few slides that I want to share. So with that, Jose, do you want to share with us how your meeting went at Vertigo's and give us an update? Do you guys have a new plan?
Yes. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Okay. So yeah, it's just, it's pretty brief and, and short here. Essentially what it was is the ad hoc committee consists of myself and Dan De Vries. And we have briefly met up with City Hall staff, primarily, you know, Mayor Leslie Jordan, our city manager, Don Reynolds, and our assistant city manager, Brian Fauch. Just to kind of get some feedback on what our city needs and our wants are for when it comes to drafting 1104030, I think it is. Sorry if I'm getting that wrong. So that meeting went primarily really well. I gathered a lot of information from that meeting that Dan and I are still digesting. At the same time, we did meet at Vertigo's with a couple stakeholders, primarily business owners that have patios within San Juan Batista and are conducting business and looking forward to doing pop-up vendors and food trucks. So we, we did have a little meeting. We, we've got some, some information there that's been really helpful. And again, we are digesting that information. I will have a report for Brian Fauch to present to Don Reynolds that would have all that information of our findings. I'm just waiting on Vertigo to submit an email with some, some other issues that they, they wanted to address. So other than that, everything went really well. We should have an update at least for our next meeting coming up.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you. Chris, did you want to come up to the podium? And Liz, do we have a slide of the map?
From screen share? Hello, everybody. So I am the Chair of the Sphere of Influence and Urban Growth Boundary Committee, which is made up of two council members, two planning commissioners and myself and a member of the public at large. The map, I think you, I don't know if you've had a chance to review it. It varies dramatically from the last, I think, map that most people have seen, which came out of a meeting at the VFW. The, the city limits are denoted as the dotted red line. The suggested or recommended sphere of influence matches that line exactly. In other words, we are not recommending any addition to the area of the city in the sphere of influence. And the urban growth boundary is in most areas around the perimeter contiguous with the city limits. But along the valley sort of to the northeast, it, where there are ag lands within the city limits, we have brought the urban growth boundary within the city limits. So in fact, there are areas that we would suggest not be allowed to develop, not be allowed to contain urban growth. So I thought, I, I might have held off on the slot, on the slide for a moment, but I just wanted to give everybody a chance to explain it briefly. But I, I'm not sure the public understands necessarily. I thought we should define sphere of influence, urban growth boundary, et cetera. So the sphere, a sphere of influence is basically a legal term. It is the boundary out to which a city is planning to expand. So it, it's used for planning purposes. If the city says over some extended period of time, generally this would coincide with a, with the general plan, say out to 2035, it could allow for an expansion in the city. And this would give the staff and, and others guidance as to what server, where services were going to need to be provided. Give us some insight into that. An urban growth boundary is a little squishier. There is not a concrete legal definition in the case of what we're proposing. We are in the midst of creating a, writing an ordinance to go along with this that would define the implementation, the limitations, the parameters and the timetable for it. That is continuing work for the, for the committee. But essentially what we're saying is we don't want urbanized growth beyond this boundary regardless of the city limit. And it is, the sphere of influence is a boundary that has to go to Lafco for approval. So the county, the city, Lafco will all have input and be able to vote on whether or not that's an accepted boundary. The urban growth boundary is one that we control locally. It is not something that goes to Lafco for approval. It is 100% within the city's control. And so it is a secondary mechanism. It's, it's really a limit where the sphere of influence is, is a guideline for expansion, where we might expand to. There has been, there was quite a bit of conversation around the idea of a green belt. We chose not to recommend a green belt because of the amount, in, in part, because of the amount of interaction that it requires with the surrounding property owners. And essentially requires that the property owners, that we enter into negotiation with all of the individual property owners that would be included in that green belt. And we felt that was an impractical solution. The, the, there is a boundary that we will be presenting to you, but have not at this point that we are defining as a planning area. And the planning area would be a very large swath include, well, in some cases, it, it, there's a chance that it would includes actually everything that you see there out into the county. And it would be an area for which we would request that the county include us in the decision-making process for any applications that come to them. It, we, like the urban growth boundary, we, we, as a committee, are planning to move forward with a suggested MOU, Memo of Understanding, to be worked on with the county to create a formalized relationship there. And that, there, there could be instances where we would become the lead agency. The city could take over as the lead agency on development that is suggested outside our city limits. Or it could be just courtesy notifications and the ability for us to participate in the process more, you know, as a stakeholder. We looked at flood zones, fault zones, fire threat zones, topography, ag zones, soil quality, zoning, among other things. among other things, in developing these maps. The the original map that was presented to the committee when I went to my first meeting earlier this year included the addition, the sphere of influence encompassed an additional, almost approximately 500 acres of area that would have essentially doubled the size of the city. And none of us felt that that was appropriate. And so we basically started from a clean sheet of paper. We do believe it covers any requirement from the city, or excuse me, from the state in terms of the ability to add additional housing with the zoning that exists within the city, the available empty space in the city, and the addition of ADUs within the city. So let's see if I have anything else. So next steps for the committee would be the urban growth boundary ordinance. We're working on that. Making a planning area recommendation, a very specific map of the planning area. We bring that recommendation like this. Working on the planning area MOU. And reviewing, staff has begun, I believe, reviewing the existing municipal code and the general plan for any conflicts or required updates relative to this, if you choose to adopt it. I think that covers what I wanted to speak to. I'd love to take any questions you guys might have. Oh, and I should say, finally, that the, that the vote for this was unanimous. It was 100% agreement and a collaboration and full consensus for this map. Or these maps, I should say.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels?
Nothing to add. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Thank you for your hard work. I know it's a lot. If it's what the city wants, we just need to work within it and make it work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez. Share, Chris, that was excellent presentation. I feel like the community that is on Zoom has a really good understanding of the terms and what we did. And the important thing, like you highlighted, it was unanimous. Took us a little bit to work through it, but at the end of the day, it was 5-0. So that was great. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we worked very hard to build consensus.
Councilmember Sebastian?
I appreciate your definitions and your explanations. I, there's some areas on here and maybe a strategic disagreement is just how to attack things, but I can't fault the effort of the work that was, that was put in.
Sure. And if you want to discuss any of the specifics, I can, I'd be happy to do that either here or offline and walk you through what the, what the process was and the thought process and the decision-making process at the committee.
Okay, yeah, I'd love that.
Great.
I too would like to meet with you, just a couple of questions. But holy moly, 5-0 vote. Well done. Yeah, I'm not, thank you. Thanks to everybody who's on the committee. Good work and definitely looking forward to seeing the new ordinances and the planning area MOU. It'll be nice to see, as Councilmember Sebastian stated earlier, that sometimes we're always, we, as San Juan Batista, don't always have a seat at the table. And it's nice that, that we have the table this time.
Well, it absolutely requires them to come to us and allow us to participate in that process. So I mean, it's, it's 100% in their control. We're asking them to play with us, basically.
Yeah.
And I would love, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the committee, Dan De Vries and David Baderas from the Planning Commission, Jack Morris Lopez and Scott Freels from the City Council. I think we worked through some, some tough material. It was a little mind-numbing, especially for the folks that have participated on this committee for an extended period of time. And then me coming in and sort of forcing us back to this clean sheet. But I think it paid off. I think it was worth the effort, and I think it was worth, the outcome was very good. So thank you all.
Thank you.
I guess the question is what the process is for adoption. I don't know what that looks like. And it might be helpful to illuminate that, the process moving forward. Because I guess it goes to you guys and the Planning Commission as well before then on to LAFCO in terms of process.
That was my understanding. I thought we were going to take it to the Planning Commission and then to the council. But I don't know if there's a legal framework for that. Okay. And now that LAFCO will have leadership, we'll have someone who can look.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, yes.
I know this, the sphere of influence in particular has held up some, some process stuff for this, for stuff that Brian's been working on. And, and there's, the SOI that exists today, sort of out there, is a document and a boundary that no one would support. And I, we know, nobody, everybody's confused about where it actually came from, how it was created. But it incorporates a huge amount of space, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of acres of additional space, which is just never anything that I'm sure anyone really intended. So it is important for it to move forward and get before LAFCO so that we're not exposed if somebody comes on.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do we have any comments from Zoom? Or chambers?
Metta Bay are seeing no hands raised on Zoom. And no speaker cards. And no speaker cards received.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chris. Share.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Okay, Lieutenant Urena, why don't you go first and give us just a rundown on the month's statistics? We do have, there's monthly reports posted on our portal.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'll give you guys an update on the monthly report for July. July 1st, we had a runaway juvenile. The juvenile was eventually located in Southern California by another agency and was returned back to its parents. 7-4, a lot of firework calls, like I stated earlier. The Fire Department was out there and we were out there, but as a department, we didn't catch anybody setting off illegal fireworks. We were so busy trying to respond to every call. So like I said, hopefully next year, we can have an assigned deputy just for firework enforcement, just like Hollister PD does. On July 4th, we also had a domestic violence call, 200 block of 7th Street. A male subject was arrested and booked into the county jail. July 4th, grand theft, 200 block of Leaf Lane. They stole two bicycles from an open garage. There's video surveillance, but as of now, we're still investigating the crime. We haven't identified the male subjects. 7-9, we had a driving under the influence on 6th Street and Washington Street. The male subject was arrested and booked. 7-21, you guys probably heard about it. We had a drunken public at the 300, the Alameda, at the window market. We were dispatched there. Deputy Villanueva was there first and then requested for backup due to the fact that the female was resisting deputies. She was booked and taken into the jail. We couldn't prove she was driving, so we didn't, we couldn't get her for DUI. 7-23, we had a warrant arrest, 2nd Street and North Street. It was a sudden release warrant, so the female was released. 7-26, we had a vandalism, 900 block of 2nd Street. Somebody broke a window to a vehicle and slashed a tire. For that, we didn't have no suspect. So it's still an open case. And then lastly, we had a vandalism on 7-26. A business at the 20 block of Monterey Street sustained damages to the windows. Probably related to the 2nd Street incident, but we don't have no suspect information. And staffing levels were still down. It seems like every time we try to, we're up to numbers, something happens. Two of our deputies, one's on medical leave, probably not going to return. And then there's another one that's coming back. So we're still down. We have one on FTO, which means he's in field training. He has like three more, two more months left, and then we just hired another deputy, which he just started orientation week. It's two weeks. And then he starts FTO, meaning three months on the streets with the corporal or a training officer. And then we have three in background. So just like any other agency, we're having issues hiring people, especially in Samuel County. We don't, we don't get paid that much. So hopefully, this next round of contract negotiations or deputies get a better contract. So hopefully that happens. And then we'll be there for the Aromas Day. We'll have some explorers helping with the, with parking. And I posted some overtime for Aromas Day, so deputies can, can go out there and walk the streets and get to know the community of Aromas. Because we don't spend a lot of time over there, but there's a lot of good people over there, and we need to spend more time over there. Other than that, if you guys have any questions, I'm here. If not, then thank you for your time, and I'll see you guys next month.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Be safe out there. No questions from council.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Charlie, did you want to add something, anything from the Fire Department today?
Yeah, this is Charlie with the Fire Department. Thank you. I don't have the incident numbers, but we do have a lot of stuff that's been going on. We do have, like I said, five new firefighters that have been, went through our in-house academy, trained, released, and now they're online, doing their training and working on their taskbooks. We're in the process of promoting a administrative captain in charge of training. That's in the process. We're going to be working with OES to offer a CERT class, Community Emergency Response Team. So we're working with OES to be able to conduct that. Once we get that out, we'll get that out to the community. The Fire Department's actually offering community CPR now at a lower rate than everybody else is. So along with active community education, active adult community education, and we're really trying to hit on that. But community CPR, if anyone likes CPR classes, contact the Hollister Fire Department at 636-4325. Or you could check our site online, and we have a QR code where you could click on it, because we actually do that every month, once a month. But then we're taking, like, we just trained the Health and Human Services for Samuel County. So we just did over 50 people, actually over 80 people last, last week. And then we're going to be doing the search and rescue teams, teaching them. So that's starting to come in. We have about 10 instructors that we have in-house certified. So we're really trying to get the good word out there. In September, we're going to be starting with our schools, hotels, motels, and apartments, our mandated inspections for the year. So I'll be bringing that to you to report on that back in December, or in December. And today, your San Juan Fire Department, your San Juan Fire Engine was at Driscoll's today over in Watsonville with Aromas and other neighboring Salinas, North County, and Watsonville at a multi-company ammonia emergency drill over at Driscoll's today. So that was pretty exciting to see them to get involved in that. So when they provide that training, we usually try to get out there, and it's free training. But the training is just, it's invaluable. So, you know, we can't get enough of that. So, and that's it that I have for right now. Any other questions?
Thank you. Questions from council? Just one quick one. CPR classes at the San Juan House?
We can offer them wherever we need to do them. So we're offering them at Station One, but we've taken them to Health and Human Services and other businesses around town also. So you could either come to the station, or we could probably host it at the San Juan Firehouse or the community center or the library, wherever it's needed.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns from the public?
We have one hand raised?
It's Commander Urena.
Commander Urena, I'm sorry.
I forgot a quick shout out. One of our commanders at the jail, Commander Kirschman, after 30 years, he's finally retiring. So we're going to lose a very important person at our jail. So he gave us his letter to have intent to retire at the end of this year. So eventually, we're going to have to promote somebody from, we're going to open it up for everybody for in-house and people of other agencies. So that's going to be a promotion. And just wanted to say that Commander Kirschman is going to be greatly missed because he's, he's a big part of our department. And just wanted to say before forgetting, he watches the meeting and he called me.
Thank you for that. If I can make one request, it not be Deputy Villanueva.
No, he's, he's having a good time in San Juan, so he'll stay there for as long as you guys want him there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And him.
I'll let him know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's it. Okay. Back to you, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates for the City Council. Thanks to Elizabeth's efforts, we've identified a new source for job announcements, and we have more than 20 applicants for recreation technician. Yeah, and so we're putting a panel together of professionals and locals to help us screen those applicants and get to some finalists. We're also using that source to advertise for the Admin Assistant position that'll help us extend our office hours. I'm personally working on the job descriptions for the public safety positions and hope to have that ready for your September meeting so we can start that recruitment and implement that part of the budget and the city gate organizational study. We need to advertise for a part-time Public Works Project Manager. We greatly miss Carl Rajarki. So that's the staffing update. We are considering an interior designer for City Hall to give an update, an upgrade. We have money budgeted in the CIP to get City Hall better organized and cleaned up. Looking at that professional asset and making progress there. The community hall improvement shall begin in just a couple of weeks. We're executing the contract and getting the insurance. And I'll get you a date as soon as I have one from the contractor. The contractor's been approved and should be executed soon. The Abbey Park Fieldlights, we have an excellent quote from Water Electric. And we're looking for energy efficiency grants to help us pay for that. But that is also budgeted, and we have money set aside to get that project started. But it's going to need a project manager. In community development, we're making progress to evade the public nuisance in San Juan Hollister Road. I think the council and the community are aware of that. Today, the REAP2 grant, it was due to Ambag. It's an $85,000 grant. It has to have a housing emphasis. And so we were looking at infill housing and ways to improve or enhance our mixed zoning downtown to expand housing in our downtown and maybe expand the MX zoning in general. The Ad-Hoc Committee, we already talked about that, and the UGB, we've already talked about that. That's SOI. Housing Element Joint Meeting, I've already mentioned that. The Loaysa subdivision at the Roundabout, Avengino and 1st Street, they have received a grading permit. You'll notice that they're removing trees there. And we've let the neighbors know that that's coming forward. Neil's Market, we have met the market owners. It is subject to a historic survey, the building and the sign. We're working with them on site improvements. It would put out a new curb and gutter and hopefully sidewalk there in front of Neil's Market and some ADA parking in front. So we are now working more closely with the owners than we were in the past. But it's planned to be just another neighborhood market like it was. And I understand that the brewery on the Alameda has sold to new owners. And, uh, I understand it's a brewery on the Alameda has sold to new owners, but I don't know who those owners are. They're just a private party from San Jose. As though they're, those are some of the updates of, of the properties around town. A wastewater project status, uh, we executed the contract for construction. It's being executed now. Uh, the city attorney had that at his desk this, this afternoon when he came in. Um, also the notice to proceed, uh, all pending USDA approval. So the goal was to get, uh, all this together by August seventeenth. Um, and we began planning a groundbreaking ceremony this week. Um, right now it looks like that'll be September fifteenth, Friday, September fifteenth after lunch. For a groundbreaking ceremony, uh, on the, on the, uh, forced main to Hollister. Uh, we invited the governor, but he couldn't come. We're still inviting everyone else. So trying to work with Senator, Senator Caviaro in particular is generally, uh, in her district on Fridays. So that's why we picked September fifteenth. Uh, so we hope that the council can make it and let me know if, if there are conflicts and we'll see what we can do. That may not be the final date. The funding, uh, the final steps submitted for the EPA grant, uh, for the million dollars. Um, and then we're in close to the near final steps for the state three million dollar program. And then, uh, we did get confirmation this week. Uh, this is important. It's public information now that the USDA, uh, has we, has approved our, our two point two million dollar grant increase. So that helps us to fully fund our project. So, uh, we're also signing some change orders to that effect that, uh, were approved and by resolution by the council. It's, uh, August third meeting. The line of credit is open. We've already received, uh, uh, close to five hundred thousand dollar, uh, payment, uh, to help us keep our cash flow moving forward. For the environmental mitigation credits, we should receive our bill of sale and, and completion of that process, uh, by Friday. And then, uh, we have regulatory status report due at the end of every quarter. And we filed our, our status report regarding the settlement agreement and the administrative order and consent, uh, on time, August first. Working closely still with the EPA and the water board on that. Um, the importing of surface water is moving forward, although quietly in the background. We have a, a new route that I shared with the council previously along Highway one fifty-six. Uh, the general manager is still working to refine that. I've seen drawings, uh. I've seen drawings for, uh, uh, an, an encasement to go under Highway one fifty-six. And we're trying to get an agreement together with, uh, Tykert Construction, who's working with Caltrans now. Uh, we have to get a separate agreement with them. And originally we thought that Caltrans would just issue a change order and then get it done, but that didn't work. So, um, the district now will execute an agreement with Tykert. And that'll help us, uh, with the, uh, with the ability to grow a water pipe to cross at Mission Vineyard Road. So there'd be a big casing with our pipe inside of it and, and room for extra pipes in the future. So that's, uh, the status of the import surface water. Now that we have executed the agreements related to the, the sewer project, we can begin to focus, uh, on water agreements with the district. So you'll see those coming forward. My Croby, uh, the water board approved a new water blending permit on well six back in May. Um, and the permit to connect, uh, well six is written by the Wallace group. So with the sole source, we have some, we have a, a firm that, an engineering firm that has designed thirty percent of this connection, the plumbing to connect the technology. Uh, don't be, uh, concerned if you notice the microbe equipment is gone. They, they're taking it back to their shop and they're, they're, uh, they're making sure that it's up to speed. And they won't put it back out on the, uh, on the well six until we have the plumbing and everything ready to go. So we, we signed an agreement for the Wallace group to design the connection. It's fairly expensive. It's, it's about fifty thousand dollars. But, uh, that process is moving forward. And finally, we'll be able to get, uh, we'll be able to get the microbe system and well six back up and running. Next, last slide of the district regional water master plan. Uh, the managers group met on August ninth. Uh, there's a governance meeting tomorrow evening. Um, I guess it should be eight sixteen twenty-three at five PM. Their master plan identifies the need for fifteen hundred acre feet of water, uh, to be, uh, sourced. And the, the rate study that they're prepared to share, uh, estimates the capital improvements to accomplish that at about sixty-nine million dollars. So of course, like we did, uh, they have a developer impact fee that they're working on, uh, to recover costs only from new development, not from existing rate pairs. So that's a relief to our system, but, uh, it's going to result in a, in a hefty fee, uh, per new family dwelling unit. Uh, they estimate right now about twelve thousand dollars. So, um, our water committee, uh, the, the mayor and council member Freeman. And, uh, I plan on attending, uh, Wednesday at five out at the district to hear more about, uh, their governance meeting about this proposed fee. And how they plan on, on recuperating their, their costs there. Real quick, um, other public works and engineering, um, we received a small grant from our insurance carrier for an American's with Disability Act assessment. Looking at our sidewalks and our curbs and gutters and our public buildings. So it's about a fourteen thousand dollar project. Um, we are designing ADA access for the Luck Park gas station. That's way overdue. We've been promising that to the Historic Society for some time and it's underway now. It's assigned to a member of the M and, M and S team. It's in design. Completing the FEMA storm assessments, uh, this is weekly FEMA meetings, uh, regarding both the January event and the March event. Uh, we're appealing, uh, the denial of our Grant Rock proposal for cleaning silt from the storm drains in the Rancho Vista area. They, they've offered us half of what the, uh, not even half, um, uh, five percent of, of what the granite rock estimate is. It's about three hundred thousand dollars to clean twelve different, uh, uh, storm drains, uh, in that area and the creek next to the wastewater treatment plant. So, uh, we have the support of state OES in that appeal and we're hoping for success there. The cog tack meeting, um, as you've already heard today, uh, hosting the California Transportation Commission at Hardina's on, uh, September twentieth. That's also the date of the, uh, uh, League of California Cities Conference in Sacramento, which I'll be attending. We met with Meritage on the eleventh, um, concerning RV sewer connections. We spent quite a bit of time working with, uh, Green Line. Uh, they camered every, uh, sewer connection along Third Street facing the vacant property there, uh, eleven eighteen through eleven twenty-six. And, uh, we did find the one property at eleven twenty that had a broken pipe. So, um, the other pipes do look solid. And so we were at least able to learn that we don't have a, a problem with Meritage and all the pipes. But we do probably have a problem with Meritage on the one pipe. And that's the homeowner and Meritage are to work that out. But that was, that just happened like Friday at seven PM. Um, so that took up a lot of last week focusing on that, trying to help out. We have a new engineer assigned to the gas station at the Alameda. Um, and so that's good news. Hopefully that project will get moving again. The developer is definitely interested and on board. We've had some issues around the Washington Street underpass, the, the mural that we're putting up with Caltrans. The mayor and I were talking about that before our council meeting tonight. Um, so, uh, we're going to focus on, on seeing if we can keep that going. But you'll notice, uh, that they're already making some improvements out there. We'll do some traffic control, sounds like, and close that to one lane. So, um, uh, we'll have to let our friends up in Langstreet Neighborhood know that, that, that we're going to be doing some traffic control to get that project done. And then, uh, we had a small grant award from three CE, uh, for identifying electric electrifying fleets. We thought that we can get as much as fifty or a hundred thousand dollars out of the program. And while we were happy to get fourteen thousand dollars, so we'll buy a, uh, small golf cart that we can. Right around, uh, barely, yeah. You know, council member feels. And. And we have a goal to get our RFP out for our landscaping, uh, uh, in our, in our assessment districts. Uh, the goal is to get that out on the eighteenth, so this Friday. So, um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Council member Frails?
Yeah, thank you. Um. Neil's Market, the rumor running around is it's the, uh, same folks that own Los Lomas Market. Do you know if that's them?
I don't know who owns the Los Lomas Market.
Well, if it is, they have a great pea market, so.
Oh, okay.
That'd be exciting.
Okay.
And then a question on. The so issues at Washington Street is just traffic control? That, the, because they're using the. The scissor lift out there. Okay, yeah.
Right. When they, the artist needed better hours, apparently, according to the mayor. She can elaborate on that.
But, okay, yeah, cause, yeah, that, there's really no traffic control. And then we'd be liable if they got hit. In our city. You remember, you know, these guys that got ran over? It was really bad.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And then. Add another question on. You answered my question about the brewery. We don't know who they are. And then, oh, you have, uh, on the tractor. Quick thing on the tractor. So the, is the Kubota dead?
Yeah, we, um, actually threw two rods and blew two big holes in the engine block.
Yeah.
Um, and it is.
It happens when you drive them underwater, but. Sometimes you can't be, you know, can't be. You can't be missed, you know?
Fort- fortunately, we have a photograph of that. So the claim is being revised to FEMA. We were paying to fix the tractor and now we're paying, now we're asking to replace it on doing.
Yeah, yeah, let's go bigger too.
Yeah.
Bigger, better. And make sure it runs on diesel and electricity. Just kidding. It'd have never made it. And, and thanks for moving ahead with the Abbey Park. Um, I'm excited to see new lighting there. Um, and we have some time because junior giants are, they finished offs for the year, so.
And council member, you reminded me, um, that we do have a filming proposal. Uh, for November, Warner Brothers wants to come and film. And I remembered one other detail that I didn't put in my slide.
Yeah, that's at the mission and at Abbey Park.
Right. Oh, good. That'll cost them. Do we have?
Say new lighting?
And that's. So, well, I don't, I don't think we're going to see anybody anytime soon with the strike going on, but. And once again, I'm just so excited. I was in the office when Don got the phone call from the USDA for the extra two point two plus million and. I don't think I've seen him that giddy in a long time. He's like, he's like, I'm just waiting for a phone call. As soon as the phone rang, I'm like, okay, I'm out. So it was, that was a great day. So thank you, Don. Appreciate it.
Mayor Protemp, Frail.
Thank you. And following up, that, that was a great day when that phone call came in. I wasn't there, but. I celebrated with you, um, metaphorically or whatever. Anyway, um. So, uh, what, what caught my eye is the brewery has been sold, the, the, the red building at, at the front of town. So I'm overjoyed to hear that because that's been bothering me for the last fifteen years. It's been empty. It's a valuable piece of property as right as we come into town or anyone comes into town. And let's hope that whoever buys it can. Put a nice establishment in that'll, that'll attract, uh, more visitors. And that's, that would be my wish. You know, um. See if we can influence someone in, to a nice commercial establishment. Uh, other than that, thank, thank you for all you've done. I'm really looking forward to also the community center acoustic improvements. I, I have friends who would like to throw a concert to test it out, make sure it works, and I'll talk to you about that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Morse Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager Don. Um, I just highlighted a couple of things and it's really the first slide. Um, I highlighted looking to upzone the MX zoning downtown and expand it. Can you give, uh, me or us a little bit more detail on that if you can?
So, um, it's, it's a study and it's going to. A third of the budget is committed to community input and community outreach. So we're not coming through with a policy to, uh, make this New York City. Um, but upzoning needs higher density. So if it's three to four houses per acre, looking probably towards, uh, uh, higher density. Which would result in more multifamily instead of single-family homes. And, and by making the district larger, meaning that it would incorporate more than just Third Street. So expanding the MX zoning out, uh, exploring that opportunity as well. The idea of making more out of the infill, just as we heard, uh, 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 the chair of the UGB SOI committee speak today. I think it's known that if we do not expand our boundaries, that we need to make better oper- take, take better, make better use of the properties we have inside our boundaries, so.
So you, when you say downtown, the historic district as well, you're including that as potential site for infill or expansion?
There are vacant sites i- in the area, um, including the lot right behind us. And, uh, the idea of mixed uses to have commercial on the first floor with the apartments above it. And we already have, uh, numerous examples of that. So it would be to scale. It would meet our design guidelines. But how, how do we market that?
Speaking to that, do you know where the new JJ's proposed restaurant site is going? I know they did, they did, um, submit a project. I mean, I haven't heard anything for like over a year and a half.
They were going through some lot line adjustments and, and some other technical details. And so I'm not sure, uh, um, I am sure the ball is in their court. Um, and, and as far as I know, that project is moving forward. Uh, if Brian is on the, on the call, he can maybe help me with that. I haven't touched that project for a while.
And then last to the JJ's, uh, topic. Did they also get sold along with the rare that both the properties were sold?
That, that I'm not aware of. Uh, Brian, do you know the status of the, of the, uh, JJ's application?
Is that what's going to be?
Brian, we can't hear you.
That was going to be a mixed use project.
Right.
Yeah.
Nope. Seriously, you want to come in chambers? We, we can't hear you. Yeah.
Okay. What he's doing on the, on the mix.
We can't hear you.
What concerns me is, um. We can go three stories in San Juan, it's our unique code. That makes me nervous.
We don't have a fiber track.
Yeah, yeah, that's something we should future look at.
Uh, Brian?
Brian, we can't hear you.
Is it possible for you to come into chambers? Thank you. Um, and while he's walking that whole entire distance. Oh, sorry.
Last question for, um, for Don, just on that front page, um, regarding the development, um, upgrade, um, updates. So you said that Neil's Market is subject to historic survey? And I put a question mark. Did you explain that?
Sure. Well, Brian's here now, so he can explain the.
I'm really stuck in my chair.
Sorry.
And, um, and the other question, uh, concerning the status of JJ's.
Yeah, where, where the project is, because we were talking, I'd asked, uh, Don about looking to upzone that, the mixed zoning downtown and expand it. So you explained that about infill and mixed use, um, development, you know, business on the first floor, residential on the top. So then it kind of made me remember when I was on the commission, what's happening with JJ's?
Well, JJ's is still an active project. Uh, they have completed their lot line adjustment and it's not completely up to the family regarding what their schedule is. And we haven't checked in after the lot line adjustment was approved. So I'm assuming the project is moving forward.
Okay.
So those permits are still valid.
Okay. And do you know if the JJ's current location was sold? Cause I heard.
I don't know.
Yeah, that it was sold as well. No, okay. And then the subject to historic survey from Neil's Market.
Yeah.
The reason for that is?
Yeah, the historic survey for Neil's Market is, was carried out because they planned to paint the building. And so because it had a status code that required an evaluation, we asked our, uh, architectural historian to evaluate the. Uh, integrity of the building and, uh, her evaluation is that it's not historical.
Okay. What about the neon sign?
And that's a different matter. Um, we're encouraging the owner to, um, perhaps take the, the top portion out, which is the chicken, pork and et cetera. Uh, portion of the sign and then to refurbish that sign, uh, as a neon sign. I think it would be awesome that, uh, they could make that happen. Um, the environment, the, the, um, historical status of that sign is not. Kind of in question because it's not really addressed in, uh, inventory. Uh, so we're going to try to work with them to see if we can make that happen.
I think it's listed though somewhere that it is.
Not of historic significance.
No, actually it's referenced in the sign ordinance as, as, uh, an allowable neon sign. Without the need for any other discretionary permits. And so it's a by right. They want to refurbish that sign. They don't need permits to do that. So, and then now with respect to the mixed use, uh, proposal. Um, that is a Third Street Master Plan, uh, application to, to provide funds to the Third Street Master Plan project. And we anticipate that part of that project will identify sites that can accommodate more intensity, commercial uses and more. more intensity, commercial uses and more density on a, at, at a modest level of increase, so consistent with the scale of the area. So that's part of the, that's part of the application.
And then the last question on that page, um, the Loyosa issued grading permit. Um, just a little quick brief on that, that is the. If I'm correct, is it mini subdivision?
The minor subdivision.
Minor subdivision, right.
So, that's, yeah, so that's, that's now, they haven't pulled the permit for a project, but they're just kind of preparing the groundwork, right? No pun intended.
Yeah, right, that final map has been, uh, recorded and the improvement plans have been accepted, so they're on their way to developing the site.
And they are also eradicating trees on that property?
Yeah, those trees that are, uh, on, in the front.
Yeah, and that's permissible with what they're doing with that? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Um. What will the well six, um, capacity maybe be brought up to?
It's, it's not much, it's like a hundred gallons per minute.
Oh, what's the, is that what the original capacity of the well is, or is that the limiting factor?
Six hundred, it's, it's a microbe.
Factor is microbe?
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, just a little add on for the mural. Um. Big shout out and welcome to Eric and Ryan to the city. A big shout out to Eric and Ryan, uh, welcoming them to the city. Uh, if you have an opportunity to stop by and, and say, hey. Um, part of the issue is that they want to work all day long and uh, they're limited right now by Caltrans who ha- Caltrans and Granite who have a flagger out there from seven thirty to three thirty. And they have five hours left of daylight that they want to use. Um, so conversation today was, can we go seven thirty to eight with a flagger? Yeah, to approve, to approve them working those hours.
The Caltrans project, though, right, so?
Yes. Yeah, but they're blocking our street.
Very true, but.
Yeah, that's the, that's, that's why they called, I don't know. I don't know. Uh, passing. And that's all I have. Everything else was asked and answered. Go ahead.
Um, with respect to the, the sewer line sewer issue on that Third Street block over in Juve Vista, was it found that the pipe is broken on the owner's property or in the city street?
So, um, it is in the city street, but the owner's responsible for the lateral all the way to the main. So, um. That's why it was difficult to identify, it was close to sixty feet and I think it was only like sixty-five feet to the lateral, so it was just before the connection. So, um, and, and then, um, Meritage explained to me Friday driving home that they have a hard time finding a plumber to come out to San Juan Batista who's capable of, of running a jetter at sixty feet. So they tried two or three plumbers, but no one had the capability of doing that. Until finally they got a plumber to agree to come from Gilroy or I'm, I'm not sure where, Santa Fe, to, to cover that job, so we need to get that plumber's, uh, uh, business card.
Absolutely. And so to your understanding, the ball's in the court of the owner and, and Meritage up for negotiation or?
We agreed Friday night that no news is good news, if I didn't hear from him, that's, they have a path forward.
Okay, I think you heard from him.
Yeah, I got a text from, 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 um, from, uh, Cortland's wife, um.
Allison, Allison, right. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments, concerns from Zoom, Chambers?
Seeing no hands raised and no speaker cards received.
Thank you. Uh, I'm now going to open a public hearing to receive comments from members of the public to consider introducing an ordinance revising Title thirteen violations by repealing and replacing Article four noticed nuisance abatement procedure and Article five emergency nuisance abatement procedure of Chapter one enforcement by adoption of an ordinance entitled alternative public nuisance abatement procedures. Uh, City Manager.
Um, I like this ordinance and I think you should adopt it. And I could, I could just speak to the ordinance a, a little bit, it, it, it gives you, uh, it will give the city, uh, a much better, uh, quiver of remedies, uh, to attack, uh, public nuisances. Uh, it's, it's comprehensive, it includes emergency abatement procedures, I won't read the whole staff report here, but uh, it does, uh, include some very good definitions, numerations of, of what constitutes a nuisance. Uh, and, uh, it does, uh, uh, also, I think I may have misspoke last time, it does also provide for some fines, which are right now, uh, in, in accordance with the government code, so. That, that pretty much sums up the, uh, nuisance abatement ordinance or the alternative, uh, public nuisance abatement procedures, and it would be appropriate at this time to hear from the public.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the pub. Uh, Zoom?
Madam Mayor, no hands raised.
Chambers?
And no speaker cards received for this item.
Thank you, do we have any write-ins? Nothing?
Uh, the comment is for the next item.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Freels?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Freeman.
Uh, thank you, th- this is one of these, um, ordinances that we've needed to revisit for quite some time, and so, uh, it's gonna give us more tools to, uh, to combat, uh, public nuisances and so as such, uh, I'm glad we're updating it into the twentieth century, twenty-first century. Uh, and, um, I, I'm, I'm for it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, a question please. Um, on the first page of the document, down at the very bottom, there's two provisions. So my question is, what are the provisions that states provisions for non-owner occupied par- properties? So what kind of provisions? Um, and provision for violations of building standard codes, life safety regulations?
Non-owner occupied properties, but it, it allows, uh, the city to enforce a public nuisance that is being maintained by a tenant without having to go, to go to the owner necessarily. I mean, the owner's obviously responsible for the property and for the lien if we impose a lien. Uh, the other, um, provision. I've lost my train of thought for just a minute. Was owner occupied property, what was the other one, one you asked about? Oh, building standard code, yeah, there's a, there's a, a separate fine for violations of and those sta- the building standards codes in which you adopted, uh, a couple of meetings ago for the, uh, California Building Code, California Fire Code, uh, life safety type violations. Uh, there's an enhanced fine for that that's provided. All the fines are, uh, governed, cities are governed by the amount of fines that they can impose. I did quite a bit of little research on this, because it, it's easy to impose, to, to make up a fine and put it in the ordinance, but if there's no statutory support for it, then it can be challenged, so I'm sure that this ordinance meets all those criteria, so.
And so is the ultimate, um, result that if the property owner does not respond to the abatement notice? Um, if it's as an egregious health and safety code violations and it's vacant, that there can be a lien by the city on the property?
Yes, yes.
So that's like the extreme measure?
There, there could, and this ordinance would allow liens to be placed on the property, yes. It also allows the special municipal assessment, gives the city the option.
And then is there, in addition to the lien, is there also fines accruing at that time as well?
There could be fines accruing, yes, prior to that, yes.
Okay.
And the city could even move to foreclose on the lien if it had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sebastian.
No questions.
I don't either. Well, there was no public comment, any other council comments? Okay. Uh, that was the first introduction, we have another reading of it next month?
Correct, it would come back for a second reading and then we'd go into a force, enforce, uh, thirty days after.
So September, then, if it was September twentieth or whatever, it'd be October twentieth when it takes effect.
Thank you. Uh, open public hearing and receive comments from members of the public to con-
We should, we should have a, a, a motion to introduce the ordinance, I think. I mean. It's, it's to consider the introduction, so. If you're gonna approve the introduction, you should probably vote on that.
I have a motion to approve the introduction of the ordinance.
Thank you. So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, uh, motion to approve the introduction to the ordinance on, um, eight A. Made by a Councilmember Morris Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Sebastian, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. Uh, open a public hearing, uh, and receive comments from members from the public to consider introduction of an ordinance revising Title eleven zoning section one one zero four one one zero regarding regulation of large scale retail, formula retail and formula restaurant businesses. Uh, Assistant City Manager Brian Vouch, can you please? No? Sorry.
It's all right. It's okay, Brian.
Cross that out, come on, Brian. Uh, City Attorney Raffi.
Yes, this ordinance has been discussed a couple of times and, uh, it was brought forward. Uh, I believe with the, uh, rationale that, uh, it would be a good thing if we, if the city could attract, uh, another hotel, another lodging establishment, possibly a bank or a pharmacy. Right now, all those businesses are, uh, you know, governed by the formula retail ordinance that's currently in place. Uh, I try to keep, I, the ordinance, in my opinion, has, has worked pretty well. Uh, it's, it's kept, uh, the city free of these, these types of businesses, so I left the, uh, findings for the, uh, use permit that would be required, uh, intact, they're, they're just the same. This ordinance just, uh, includes, uh, more definitions and also, uh, expands the purpose for the ordinance to, uh, in, in the event it was challenged. Uh, there are many of these ordinances now in force, uh, and, uh, this would exclude from, uh, categor- categorization as formula businesses, uh, certain, uh, enterprises that are now considered, and that would be hotels, motels, uh, grocery stores, drugstores. Uh, they would not be considered to be formula business uses, also pharmacies would be included in that. I think it'd be appropriate also now to hear from the public.
Thank you. Public comment?
We have one hand raised.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you, this is Karavonk, San Juan Batista, thank you, members of the council. Um. I'm waning a bit, sorry. I also have COVID, so I'll do my best here. I've got two issues, uh, that I'd like to address. Hopefully you all got my written comments that I sent to you on Monday. Um, so this rewritten formula business ordinance is way overbroad. It entirely exempts hotels, motels, banks, supermarkets, gas stations, et cetera, from the findings that would be applied to all other formula businesses. First, that it serves the needs of the population, that the business will complement and enhance the existing character of our city, and that the appearance is compatible with the existing scale of development, distinctive architecture, pedestrian orientation of the town character, and enhance historic character of the surrounding areas. Why are we exempting, uh, uh, you know, big motels and hotels from this ordinance? Uh, can you just imagine a super eight motel coming in? Let's say, uh, next to the Arco gas station or on that corner that used to be owned by Kathleen Manning. Um, it would still be subject to a conditional use permit, but, you know, it allows that use. And then we would just be regulating the activities, you know, hours and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, I don't know why we need to exempt hotels, these formula businesses without applying these standards to them. And then the second item I want to address is that the staff report and the resolution says that the proposed ordinance is exempt from CEQA. Um, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. Really, first of all, CEQA applies to decisions that can lead to indirect impacts, such as making changes to local codes and ordinances. Two, the proposed changes allow formula hotels and businesses, et cetera. Um, allowing them would have a significant adverse impact on our environment, that is, our cultural resources, which are, are, is our historic city, as well as archaeological, if you allow them to build on the other side of one fifty-six, you know, we have, um, all kinds of Native American, um, stuff in the, in the ground, basically. So, um. Why are we doing this? We already have two hotels that are not formula businesses. Why do we want to bring in, you know, these, these other, other types of businesses? It makes no sense to me. You know?
Thank you. Thank you for your time, your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did they cut you off?
Yeah.
Fran, you have three minutes?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you so much, uh, Frances Harris, three twenty-five. Um, I, I, I just wanted to add that, um, I think that this is definitely a step that is, that we're not ready for at this point. I think it's something that needs to be looked at in the future, but right now, I think all of our businesses are struggling. And adding these types of businesses are just going to make businesses that have been here forever and that have invested in our city go away. Uh, my business, my storefront went away, and I think that we need to be cautious of that and, and really think about this decision. I don't think we're ready for it. I also want to add that why do we have these types of, of agenda items that are so important and really require more involvement at nine forty-one PM on a Tuesday night? Um, we need more people to be, uh, part of this and when you have it at, at, uh, on a Tuesday night, nine forty-one PM, I mean, you're not gonna get the, the feedback that you guys need, so, thank you.
Thank you for that.
We don't have any more hands, hands raised, but we do have a public comment in Chambers.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I think that, uh, I think Kara presented her, her first point was well, well, well stated. And I think that, um, I just think this ordinance is very poorly written. It, it, it's, we've sort of cobbled it together over time and I, I don't think it is well, um, well- It, it, it's, we've sort of cobbled it together over time and I, I don't think it is well, um, well conceived. And it really needs to be reconsidered and maybe a clean sheet of paper. And looking at, starting with what the intent is and then figuring out how to implement that intention. Because I don't, I think there's some pitfalls here that, that just don't make sense, anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns, council, Councilmember Frios?
Thank you, um, I, I missed the last meeting, so I had a chance to hear the, the whole summary, but, um, I did do some reading and. I'm also kind of confused with. There's a few things I'm confused with, we used to have, um, um, we had banks here and we had drugstores. Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but there, we can currently, we can still have those?
Yes, you could still have them under the for- the formula retail, uh, ordinance right now does not ban anything. It just requires a condition, you pu- use permit that makes those certain findings, and those are the same findings that are in the current, the proposed ordinance, I didn't change.
Okay, so that just rolled over.
They just, the, the, all the findings rolled over, essentially, right now, the ordinance is essentially just those findings. And as I said before, I mean, it, it's worked pretty well, but banks.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with what we have, um, I, I d- I really don't, um. I don't foresee. Wyndham or. I, I, I don't foresee this, the, uh, uh, some big hotel chain coming to San Juan Batista. Especially since you saw what we did with the sphere of influence and the urban growth boundary. Pretty much. There is no room to grow outside of the other side of the gas station as, as Carr is concerned, and I get that. It just seems like it's opening up a can of worms, I'm getting, I'm a little nervous about it. What's next, I mean, because we can go three stories, so do we want a three story? Hotel on the piece of property that's now JJ's, if that's sold? I, I, I don't. Because none of them are attractive. Unless it was built a hundred and fifty years ago. But it's all concrete tilt up and. Oh tile. So I, I'm, I, I'm not happy about this, I, I think we should clean this. And I do agree, it's. Nine forty five, and this is a very important decision and it's the last thing on the agenda. It's, that's concerning. Just because I'm tired and I can't remember the points I needed to make. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm not really happy with moving on with this right now, to be perfectly honest with you, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Thank you, so. I'm kind of the one to blame for this, and since the Urban Growth Boundary Committee has submitted their, their, their. Proposal, and if we accept it, the hotels is pretty much out of the. I, I just can't see a hotel of JJ's, it's just too small a lot, it's, it never have to be parking and all kinds of stuff, there's just no room. There's, there's no room on the other side of one fifty six either, um, once you get past the gas station, you get to Liao's Hotel. And, um, that was kind of one of my concerns, which is why I threw that in there, because from what I understand, it's for sale. It's been for sale for, off and on for the last year and a half. I've lived here n- not half as long as Scott, or, or, but, but I've lived here a little bit longer and I remember when that hotel was really bad. It was a detriment, it was a. A detriment to the city, I, 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 I can't think of. Rats and rodents and cockroaches running around, it was really bad, so. I wouldn't want to see that happen again, um. If you can get a nice motel in and the Liao Hotel, in my opinion, is a nice hotel, he's redone the inside, it's beautiful. It's, it's fantastic. It, it wouldn't be a Motel Six, it wouldn't be a, a whatever. You know, it's too fancy for that, it would have to be a courtyard or a fair mo- uh, whether, not fair amount. Wh- whatever it is that Marriott has, has, or visitor hotel, so that was my line of thinking, um. And my other line of thinking is, this is economic development, we say we want to do economic development and yet. We don't, a- 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 and this, this is, this is economic development. Um, we have a lot of older people, including myself in town, who now needs drugstores on a regular basis. I just had to run to Walgreens and Gilroy yesterday to pick up a prescription. I don't mind, it doesn't bother me, I, I had to do other things in Gilroy anyway, but. There's a lot of people who'd rather stay in town, uh, uh, and, and. You know, I, I'm just trying to encourage a pharmacy, that, that, that's all, um, and I think. Chris, two months ago or three months ago, stood up at the diocese and talked about. A McDonald's in, where, Austria or somewhere, what? So, what, what I'm trying to say is. If a pharmacy opens up somewhere on Third Street or even builds a new building somewhere, we can. If the planning commission is on its ballgame, we can force design standards that make it look like San Juan Batista. And it would make it much more convenient for our citizens to drive. Three quarters of a mile instead of. Twenty miles.
Doesn't the current ordinance allow that?
I think it does, uh, you know, but, okay, okay, well, I'm sorry. I was, I was, I was told you I was trying to, you know, not let the. The not, one of the two nice hotels we have in town now kind of go down the drain, so I've seen that before. Were sold to another private party and it just deteriorates quickly, and I, I don't want to see that happen, I want to keep. Stepping forward, not two steps back, you know, and so I am a little worried about that, because I've seen it, particularly in the hotel business where. Some private family buys it, if don't have enough capital to run it correctly, and it deteriorates quickly. Uh, and it, it's, it's not good for the city. The hotel that was there in two thousand and five was not good for the city, it was horrible for the city. If we want to be a tourist town, we need. One of the things that, uh, gets drilled into your heads, if you go to an economic develop, if, oh, if a family stays overnight. They spend two times as much in the city, you know, and so that's good for our local businesses. That's the reason behind it. I, 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 I don't, you know, I'm not, um. Very to it, if we want to cross out hotels, I'm fine with that and just keep the two we have, I, I'm fine with that, I would. But I still would like to see, uh, a pharmacy in the bank just for convenience for the citizens of San Juan Batista. And for economic development, I think. That, that's one of the things that holds us back from having. Um, nicer shops in town, we, we don't have close services.
Thank you. Excuse me, Councilmember Morris Lopez? Yes, thank you. Um, I think I understand your intent, John, but I have to wholeheartedly do agree with, um. But Councilmember Frios, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, I mean, we have an ordinance now. That states clearly to these issues and these types of businesses, and it's worked for over a decade plus, I believe. I do believe that this exemption status to the three buildings or businesses that you outlined. Uh, Pro Tem Mayor, um, Freeman, really does open up the, the, the floodgates for maybe businesses that we don't want. And with that, is there litigation behind it that we may have to allow them to build? Uh, you know, concrete buildings of three stories high, yes, the, um, the new SOI that we worked on and the urban growth boundary. Kind of makes some really natural barriers to prevent that, but I don't think that, you know, we should be so naive to think that's going to stop anyone from coming in. If you pull these exemptions. Um, as far as your reasoning behind those particular businesses, as I've said repeatedly two other times. Bringing in a third hotel is only going to kill the business of the two independent hotels we have, and I think they do a nice job. They cannot keep their rooms filled except for maybe wedding weekends. And if we bring in a third party, a big Hilton or something, it's just going to kill small businesses, and that's not what we're about. And if you talk about economic development, then you know what, fix the things that are here now and promote them and help them, not bring in. An outside, you know, big corporate building, even the pharmacies, a lot of seniors can get. Their three months ninety day supplies and as a healthcare provider, I have to kind of scratch my head and think about where would you propose a pharmacy? Are you talking about a Walgreens, a C V S? A Target, you know, what are you talking about, because when we had that, that was forty plus years ago when. My father, along with other men in the, in the town, we had the, the business here and the population to support a small independent. Privately owned, locally owned Wayland's Pharmacy, I believe, and they had their main pharmacy in Hollister. That's not, that day is gone, a lot of people are encouraged by their insurances to get a cheaper rate to pay for ninety month supply of. Their blood pressure pills, so having a standalone pharmacy doesn't make sense to me, doesn't even seem like it's economic development. Um, the other thing about a bank, most people bank online, my eighty six year old mom banks online, I've said that story before. I'm sorry, I have a broken record, a lot of people do online banking, so that day has come and gone, when I was a kid, there. Banks here, um, I still have my, my first deposit book. Five bucks, you know, from nineteen sixty something, uh, yeah, Bank of America, right, Mr. and Mrs. Derry, and there were three daughters. So, I, I think, you know, on all honesty, John, I understand where you're coming from, but it's, it really doesn't fit. I, I think your argument for economic development just doesn't fly with this, this, um, proposal, I'm sorry. I, I think we either dash this, keep what we have, uh, maybe clean it up a little bit, the language, what, uh, Chris said. Uh, the speaker, you know, but I, I really think going forward with this is really not the right direction, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sebastian, go.
Lack of competition breeds complacency. I don't know how to say that more plainly. I mean. Things have gotten better with time. Historically, in a lot of places through competition. People get creative, people will find new ways, they. Quality of certain things goes up, um. And so inviting some of that here, I think would be great for our economic development. My father worked nearly fifty years at IBM, and I was exposed to so much new technology. For him having that job and being at the forefront of technology, he won't even put cash in an ATM, goes to a teller. He was here with us, spending time with us, needed, he had to go home, cut his trip short because he had to go home and get his medication, he's not going to. Do, and there's a lot of people like that, um. You give people what they need, how they want it, with options, and all the new tech, I'm, I'm the biggest proponent of new technology, but. If people will not use those services, we shouldn't have to force them, there are. People who, who can't or won't do those things, and it would be great to have these services here for them, um, maybe as written, this isn't what we need. I'm all for sitting around, and I think. Using the mechanisms that we've had to discuss this have been great, some great comments from Kara, some great comments from, from everyone else, and maybe we sit down, like Chris said. Look through everything and rewrite instead of, um, looking over and editing, but. We say we want economic development, we say we don't want the town to die, and our actions say the exact opposite. From the words that we're saying, um. So, that's my comment, I'm al- I'm all for looking through this and rereading and, and figuring out how to work within. Confines of intent and. Making our city more open, more friendly for, for new businesses, that would be great for us. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, uh. Thanks for all of the great comments on, on both sides of this. We lost a bank because we didn't have enough. Going into it. Uh, there wasn't enough action, there wasn't enough money, there wasn't enough business, there wasn't enough, there just wasn't enough. Perhaps if the Health Foundation comes in, we get a pharmacy, that would be awesome. There are ways around. To support. The intent of this. Um, and I, it might need a, a new rewrite. Um, I certainly don't want to see a three story hotel, um, but having. Uh, having a, a Motel Six come in is, is not a. I mean, it, it. It might be great on the outside, it would look however we wanted it to look. Um, but what's stopping them from coming in? Uh, if, if, uh, the hacienda is sold to, to someone like that, so. Um, maybe some, maybe some rewrites. And, and look at things, um, through a, a different eye. Uh, I was concerned also about the, the SEQUA analysis and not having to do one. Um, especially if we're expanding and building bigger, building up. So perhaps moving on, and that takes me to you moving on. Don't you have a meeting at ten? Ten fifteen, sorry, okay, uh, well, we'll wrap this one up. So, uh, we have had our, um, public comment, we have had our first introduction to it. Where do we want to go, a motion to not move on with this particular rewrite? Uh, and perhaps go in a different direction?
Right, you, you could just table the matter and direct that it be referred to, to staff for further discussion or refer to the planning commission possibly. Could do that.
Or to public.
Yeah.
Town hall? With whatever, okay, uh, so. Can I, can I ha- uh, have a, a, a motion to, uh, table this?
Yeah, that would be appropriate.
So moved.
One second.
Thank you. Uh, motion made to table eight B by Mayor Pro Tem Freeman, seconded by Councilmember Frios, may I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Frios?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much, uh, one quick thing, I did forget to announce Arts in the Park on Saturday, the nineteenth. Uh, at the Luck Park. Uh, I apologize for that mistake, uh, can I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, uh, seconded, thank you, uh, may I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Frios?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.